Yeah, I am, yeah.
Good evening, welcome to Hefman Bay Planning Commission, Tuesday, May 28th. Let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, deliverable.
Okay. So we'll start with roll call and just noting Commissioner Hernandez is on the phone and calling in from New Orleans, and that's been included on the agenda. Thanks for calling in, Rick. So with that, roll call.
I am present.
Okay, so Commissioner Hernandez is present. Commissioner Polgar, here. Commissioner Reddick?
Here.
Vice Chair Benjamin?
Here.
And Chair Holt?
Here.
All are present.
And just for a note, I do have to leave tonight at nine o'clock, so when that time rolls around, if the meeting's still going, Vice Chair Benjamin will step in and close out the meeting. So with that, approval of minutes.
Move to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, public comment. This is for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, submit a green card that's in the back there. I don't have any cards. I don't see anybody waving and getting up to the podium, so we can close the public comment period. For any of the other public hearing items, please fill out a green card. And, see, I should have mentioned, in terms of the agenda, we are gonna rearrange some items here, because Commissioner Benjamin does have a conflict on item 1D, and as noted, he's needs, I will need to leave, so he will be chairing. So we're gonna move up item 1D and do it in place of item 1B. So we'll be able to handle the Pasta Moon item and then go right into the natural vegetation management item. We don't need any formal motion for that, do we? We're all good. Well, for the Pasta Moon item, correct, yeah. So for that, we can move into our first public hearing item, item 1A, use permit allowing the sale of distilled spirits at Pasta Moon.
And we're working on the technical difficulty of the bar, so it's gonna have to stay up there right now.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah. Please ignore the box in the middle of the screen.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
Microsoft may decide to update us at any moment, which should go smoothly, I'm sure. For the record, I'm Doug Garrison. I think PowerPoint's probably optional on this one. I think PowerPoint's gonna be optional on this one. This is Pasta Moon, well-known local establishment. They've done well. They were able to purchase, they're moving out of their leased property on one end of Main Street, and they've purchased 845 Main Street, the old Sotrella Restaurant site, and they're gonna be relocating. In the commercial downtown district, the, you can operate a restaurant, you can also sell wine and beer by right. Doesn't require a use permit, basically a business license and a liquor license from the state. If you're gonna build a new restaurant, or you're going to expand an existing building, or if you're gonna change a building from, say, a retail store to a restaurant, you'd need a coastal development permit. In this case, this was built and used as a restaurant with a full-service bar. It's, there's no plans to alter the building, other than some minor upgrades that are being required by the fire district staff to meet current safety requirements. So it's one of the rare projects we have that does not require coastal development permit or site and architectural review. It's just a use permit, and it's just for selling distilled spirits. In our code, as I said, they could move in as a full-service restaurant with wine and beer tomorrow, but to sell distilled spirits, they actually have to get this use permit. So that's why we're here, and the focus is really just on the use permit. There are no changes to the site proposed. And that, if you could read it, basically is what I've just said. So this is it. I just, it doesn't show up because of the Microsoft thing, but there's some work going on out in front, and I just wanted to clarify, that's not part of this project. That's part of the ongoing city project to repair damaged sidewalks. In this case, it was damaged by tree roots, so the city cut down the tree and they're replacing this section of sidewalk, and that's not part of this project. Just give up on that. But, so really, when you go through the use permit, we have specific findings for sale of alcoholic beverages. And it's all centered around neighborhood compatibility. And so as it's noted in the staff report, it's a commercial district, but there are residential buildings in close proximity. And one of the unique things about this project is we know the applicant. What they submitted to us in a letter was that this will be essentially the same Pasta Moon they have down the street. Same hours, they typically run out of customers by nine, 10 o'clock at night, maybe New Year's Eve or some private event, they might be open a little bit later. They're not proposing outdoor events that would generate noise. And so in that sense, it's, should be just fine. There's not, like I said, it's a known entity, it's not some company that we are taking their word for this. We know what they do. Typically, when we grant permits, they stay with the land, so that if they sell the business to a new owner, the use permit survives. In this case, we amended that condition in the resolution that links it to these owners, so that if they sell the business at some point, the new owners would have to come in and get a use permit, so if somebody wants to open a disco, they're gonna have to come back and talk to us. That's really about it. Staff's recommending approval of the use permit as conditioned. That concludes my recommendation.
Just for everyone going forward, Commissioner Hernandez wants to make sure that we're very mindful of the microphones, so he can hear us, and of course, our audience as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, any questions for staff?
One, so in a procedural matter, I noticed that there's not, if they were just selling wine and beer, not a problem. Hard alcohol, problem, or at least a new, an additional hurdle to get through. Is that, you know, I don't wanna dwell on it too long, but is that one of those anachronisms of code that we ought to have a look at, or are there, is that something that deserves a lot more thought spoken with complete naivete?
I think it probably deserves some thought. I don't know if I would characterize it as requiring a lot of thought.
Okay, thank you.
I think in this case, it seems like overkill, because like I said, Pasta Moon's a known entity. If this was some company from Chicago or something, we might say, well, maybe we'd want to, although realistically, the difference between a restaurant that sells wine and one where you can get a martini is pretty nominal, I would say.
So I'm sorry if I missed this, but did Sotrella not sell, were they wine and beer only?
They closed well before I was here, so I don't know. I believe.
I thought they had a full bar, but, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Chair, I think that the use permit probably expired.
Let's ask the expert, Rick.
Yes, they had a full bar.
Okay, we have confirmation. Okay, so we don't have a change, necessarily a real change for the best. Okay, so with that, are there any other questions, or we can open up the public comments? I don't have any public comment cards on this item, so with that, we can close the public comment period, and is there any discussion or motion? If we're all good, feel free, go ahead.
I don't know the exact wording, but I would like to move to adopt the resolution and approve it.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Okay, with that, as mentioned, we are gonna move up item 1D, the natural vegetation management.
Through the chair?
Yes, Commissioner Benjamin.
So, the Fair Political Practice Act requires that anyone who recuses themselves from an item gets to explain to the public why they have to recuse themselves. I will be recusing myself from this item for a couple of reasons. One of the parcels that is the subject of this item is within 500 feet of my home, and the law requires that I recuse unless there is clear and convincing evidence that I don't have to, and that's expensive and hard to do, so I'm not gonna try. The other reason that I am concerned is one of these parcels was the subject of a settlement agreement that I reached with the city after a dispute that we had maybe 10 years ago. And again, it's not absolutely clear to me where the conflict would be, but out of an abundance of caution and respect for the process, I prefer to recuse myself. So I'll be in the next room not listening. Somebody come get me.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Polgar.
And I just, through the chair, I'd just like to reiterate what Rick said about speaking very closely into the microphone, just so that we can all hear. Thank you.
Mr. Doughty.
Beloved system here. Good evening, all. John Doughty, Public Works Director, City of Hefman Bay. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight regarding the city's natural fuel management program and project. Sorry for the pictures here in the update. What we're here tonight is to request the Planning Commission to approve a coastal development permit to allow annual managed goat grazing program on four parcels, two of which are located east of Highway 1, oftentimes identified as Glencrey and Beechwood, and the other two parcels are city-owned parcels to the west of Highway 1, adjacent to Bev Cunha Country Road. And I'll show a picture of those sites. We are, for tonight's meeting, recommending some amendment to, amendments to the package, and so we'll go over that as well, in light of new information. So the site is those four parcels, two to the east of the highway and one you can see, and one that you could see if that install box wasn't there. The property in question, this is from the draft local coastal plan, planning area, sheet two of three, and the area, I'm not sure if this will show up, yes, it will on this, is this vicinity here as well as down here. This, as of today and throughout the conversations leading up to tonight's meeting, has been the subject of most of the conversation, the Beechwood and Glencrey properties. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move along. So, again, sorry. Pictures looking from the terminus of Golden Gate. The first one is looking back toward the ocean, the other is looking back up toward the hills, both looking at the Beechwood property. Glencrey, this looking from the Highway 1, looking back to the east. And then, one of the issues of conversation has been, you know, where will some of the staging areas occur? These two areas are the most logical for the west side of Highway, being the terminus of Bev Cunha, near the SAM plant. And then, pictures of both this parcel as well as the other parcel owned, and these are again owned by the city. The westerly parcel was purchased by the city many years ago for purposes of developing their coop yard, which was then adjacent to the city's owned sewer treatment plant, which later became part of the SAM JPA, so a little bit of history there. So, oh, a little better. So, what would this presentation be without having a few nice pictures of goats? So there you go. A couple of other pictures there, so have to get those plugs in. So, as we worked through a number of the conversations, letters, emails, we have landed on a recommended amendment to tonight's ultimate recommended action. What I can say is a couple of things. One, when we initially discussed this vegetation management program and plan with members of the community, it was anticipated that the city's biologist would take a pretty harsh and conservative stand on basically grazing of some of the wetlands, particularly those designated and delineated on the Beechwood property in Glencrey, primarily Beechwood. Mr. Deggie surprised us in a good way, I think, in terms of looking at his recommendations, looking at what the record shows, and identifying that frankly, in his opinion and those opinions of many researchers, this is actually, could be a net benefit to those habitat and the environment. However, that is not an opinion shared by all, and as such, we are asking for you to consider a recommended amendment and change to the scope of the work proposed in this project. So first, excuse me, first, makes it very difficult, but we have delineated here, these two areas here, which are basically 100-foot boundaries here along the existing residences, terraces, and in the Grandview neighborhood. While there is provision for as little as 30 feet of vegetation control and management, 100 feet is the standard, and it is included in your draft LUP plan and policies related to that. It's also consistent with what many of the fire agencies have recommended, and as such, we are strongly recommending that we maintain a 100-foot vegetation management buffer between the areas there and adjacent to the residential areas in particular. Now, this is very difficult, because that box happens to be right where I need to be working. So. Okay. So, what we have here on particularly the Beechwood property is a fairly large, oh, you're gonna move it around there, oh, there we go. Oh, that's all right. We can, we can, it's all right. It's easier to have the picture than it is not. So just pull it up there. There we go. Okay, okay. I got it, I got it. So, the primary areas that we're, we're looking at are what in a normal circumstance would be the aqua color, the lighter blue here. There's a few spots here, here, a spot over in this vicinity, and the primary area for Beechwood is this area here. What our recommendation is, is that this approval includes provision for 100-foot buffer and mitigation here with grazing, that the remainder of this wetland delineated area be left alone and not grazed, as well as these other smaller areas, and that the areas in the, what would be the purplish and colors, and the brownish color would be grazed and dealt with. And there would be no change here, just note that there is the required buffering and separation for the existing frog pond and mitigation site that's here. So those would remain in place. Our primary issue is, is that our recommendation is, again, maintain 100-foot area here, 100-foot area here, and then do not graze any of the other designated delineated wetland areas, the aqua. Now it's. Okay. So, in a perfect world, again, our recommendation is the same as what was on the request, which is to approve this CDP, but with the exception of those areas identified and excluded from those areas, as it relates to the wetland delineated and designated areas. So, underneath there is a Q and A question. If there's any questions, I'm happy.
Thank you very much, and apologies for the technical difficulties here. So I know Bridget's working to try to resolve that or find an alternative here. Are there any clarifying questions for staff?
John, if the grazing is limited to the area you just mentioned, is that gonna satisfy the fire department's safety standards?
Those will meet the fire department's requirements, yes.
And just to clarify, then, in the map of the, showing the turquoise areas were the wetlands, and there were bits and pieces that were within that 100-foot boundary that wouldn't be, that would be fenced off or something from the goat grazing. Is that my understanding? Sorry.
They, the grazing activities, they utilize a series of fences, in any event, as they limit the areas for the grazing, so these would just be delineated, marked out, and, for avoidance by the biologist prior to any of the grazing beginning.
Okay.
And then they would be fenced and protected from the grazing.
Okay, and using the, because I know they use the electrified fencing, so that's, okay. So it'd just be flagged and fenced, okay.
Yes.
And had there been any follow-up feedback or information from Gary Deggie about the revision to the recommended approach?
This, while Gary still holds to his original position that, that the evidence shows more that this is beneficial than a negative to the wetland, he identified this as a very viable alternative to address the issues and concerns from, from the community.
Okay, I just wanna note, we did receive correspondence on this from Sierra Club and why I'm spacing. Thank you, thank you, Committee for Green Falls. So we have, we have received all those materials and have been able to review those. Jill or John, could you maybe just describe who Gary Deggie is and his relationship with the city, and has he represented us before on other projects and his reputation?
Sure, I'm happy to do that, because I've been, well, John and I are both working with him quite a bit. But for the local coastal land use plan update, Huffman Broadway Group is the city's biologist of record who has prepared the really extensive updates to the habitat maps and identification of environmentally sensitive habitat areas. They have done extensive mapping with LiDAR, with their mapping experts, their photographer. They have also done ground truthing and reviewed all of the different databases, et cetera. Gary himself unfortunately can't be here tonight, he's out of town. He would have been happy to have filled out your questions. He's a resident, and he's been a resident for a long time, so you also benefit from his, you know, firsthand knowledge of properties all over town that he notices, frequents, and checks out. He He, he himself is with the Audubon Society, I know, and he gets involved in the Christmas counts for the birds, and I think he's actually done that at Beechwood in, in past years. So, we've really been very fortunate that the timing was good to have Huffman Broadway Group work on the land use plan update, and that was the map, base map, that John was presenting to you with the changes. Bridget is rebooting the system. We're hoping to have something nice and clean for you for the next item, and we're just really sorry that this has happened. Did that answer your question?
That does. That does. Thank you.
Okay.
And perhaps if Bridget gets the system back up, we can maybe have John go back and touch on some of the maps.
We'd like, we'd really, that map was pretty nice. I'd like you to be able to see it. Thanks.
It was really good. I assure you.
I'm sure it was.
It was great.
I'm sure it was. Any other sort of clarifying questions?
Well, I have a question on the, on the timing of, of this work. I'm seeing again that the, the Coastside Fire Protection District says compliance required by June 28th of this year. And in the biologist's report, it's pointed out that at least one of the, the most threatened species is most active from March through July, so it isn't ideal timing. But I don't guess that the fire district is in the habit of, of making compromises and such things to allow us to do that later in the summer.
Could you remind me which species was the, was the most impacted from?
The garter snake. He mentions is most active from March through July.
Well, again, there were, there were several things, obviously, leading to this. One is the fire department would love to get compliance from everyone prior to the July 4th point, is their sort of magic point. People, despite the regulations that say otherwise, do like to have fireworks, and, and that places people at risk. So, they're always sort of having one eye toward the realities of, of people and their behavior. So, that's, that's one factor. There was a second factor from the perspective of the, the actual operator, which is that they were scheduled around a lot of different issues. They also felt Star Creek, that is, that the earlier they could get out there, the, basically, the softer and more tender and more likely the, the goats would be to, to, to get it down as, as low as they possibly kind of could during one year. What Star Creek has made it clear to me is that we shouldn't expect this to look like the bluff top does now, or the landfill. That's over many years of grazing. There's a lot of woody plants in this, in, in all of these areas. They will not come down in one year from the goat activity. So, there is a balancing act, too, with them. One, in terms of their schedule. I'm stressed, I'm stressed about their schedule right now from Star Creek. And then, obviously, the, the fire department's desire to have this in place and dealing with it. It's beginning to look, based on that point, like we're going to probably meet the July, the July ending point anyway, and close to the point where the fire department will get what they want out of that, which is compliance, and that's their primary desire.
That makes sense, John. Thanks.
Mr. Polgar, should I have another question? Okay. So, with that, let's go ahead and turn it over to public comment. I do have two cards here, and I saw another one waved at me. So, our first speaker will be Mike Ferrera.
The change is interesting, except that the map, I never saw it. I don't think you saw it before the meeting, and it was one of the problems with the staff report. No wetland map. If you don't have a map, how do you know what to do with the property? And how could you get a map? Because, in your biological opinion, the only references are to a 1999 map that was done one year after the whole property was deep-disked, and a 2010 map that concerned only the Glen Creek property, which even nosy me has never seen. Okay? It's been somewhere in the city. And let's assume that those were even good, which they weren't. This is 2019. It's nine years after 2010. It's 20 years after 1999. So, I would also like to mention that in the fire department's letter, it says 30 feet. Three zero. Thirty. The deadline, I can only say that when I was on the planning commission, the biggest mistakes I ever made was when somebody gave me a deadline. I rushed something through once, and it was six years later that the funding came through. So, the city had a CDP in the past that allowed this 30-foot clearance. All through the aughts, I guess, you know, from the 2000 through maybe 2010, they let it lapse. In 2011, they asked for a CDX from the Coastal Commission. And the Coastal Commission said, "No. Give us more information." And then they buzz-cut the whole place, except for the bushes. I don't know what the resolution was between the Coastal Commission and the city at that time, but that was kind of very typical for that particular administration. So, at one time, 30 feet was okay with the Coastal Commission, 30 feet was okay, is obviously okay with the fire department, and we don't have wetland maps. Let's just do 30 feet. Protect the homeowners according to the fire department's request. And if you want to do goats next year, maybe we can go out and get credible delineations, learn where the wetlands are. And I'm really worried that many of these wetlands are identified only by vegetation. So, no, I don't want to see it munched. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, before we go to our next speaker, would staff just like to, I noticed that Bridget has got it up. Do you want to just run through real quick and just speak to your maps? Maybe if you could just bring up the, the habitat map just real quick? Just as I imagine some may have comments on, or concerns about that. And thank you, Bridget, for diving into that.
So, the rec, the recommendation is 100 feet here, 100 feet here. Do not touch any of the areas that are in the aqua colors here, 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 and this large area here, and allow for the rest of this vegetation to be grazed. So, at this point, I haven't done the exact calculation, but we're probably looking at somewhere less than 50% of the area that was anticipated to be grazed, of being grazed under this scenario. If, if I, if, after public comment, I'd like to respond, which is with a note from Gary, and I think it's, I think it's germane to, to what's been said, and I, it'll be helpful.
That's fine. We'll, we'll come back after the public comment period. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to just speak to that map while we're still going. So, next speaker, Ken King.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Ken King from the Sierra Club. I'm a resident of Half Moon Bay. I happen to live on Terrace Avenue, so I have followed this thing for, you know, more than 40 years. And, you know, the letter from Mr. Ferrera is succinct, and it, you know, gives the fraught history, which you should pay attention to, because as environmental people, we're, we're happy that, you know, goats will go out and chew plants and excrete the remains on the land, and it's all, all nice. But the, this map wasn't available before. We wondered, like, where the hell it came from, why we haven't seen it before. Having said that, it points to the issue about information flow here. We don't get it, you're getting it, at the same time you're supposed to make a decision. Mr. Dowey said that the agreement with the fire department and the city back in '05 or '06, '07, wherever that was, was for 30 feet. But now it's standard to do 100. That sounds like alchemistry to me. I don't buy it. I think it's offered in bad faith. You can call it policy. I call it a kind of a bait and switch. And we're going to oppose it if we have to, you know, go to the city council after a decision here if it doesn't go the way it should, which is, you know, sticking to the original agreement. But I'll tell you one other thing. If it goes to the Coastal Commission, I imagine they'll support us, but if they don't, we're going to be adamant. So, you, you can buy a lot of trouble with, with this goat operation, which you really can't control if you sign up today, because they're talking about for, you know, decades. And I say, "Where did it come from? Where did that 100 feet come from?" "Oh, it's standard policy," because he says so.
Thank you. Our next speaker, and this is the last card that I have on this item, is Paul Grigoroff. Grigoroff. I always butcher your name. Sorry.
Detroit.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Speak right up into that microphone.
That's the first comment I want to make. I had you as sort of a train therapist. I'm a little good, but I'm, for large parts...
Could you please speak into the microphone, please? Or could you turn the microphone on? Yeah. Nope, you just need to turn it on.
Okay. For large, there we go. For large parts of this presentation, I could neither hear nor see the information, and I was shocked. In other words, it looks like a serious issue. If I'm correct, I quickly reviewed your agenda and saw over 200 pages of attachments from the Sierra Club that looked like they were very germane, which I don't think we've heard anything about. In any case, it seems to me we ought to be able to hear what's going on. And if for some reason that's not possible, that information should be repeated. Here I am, making the same mistake that I'm sort of talking to the commission members about, not speaking closely into the tip of the microphone. But that's a, a general problem here at these meetings, and I've seen it again and again. For something this complex, not to be able to see the maps and not to be able to hear the discussion seems problematic to me. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and appreciate the reminder. It's something we're always working on in terms of trying to speak up. And again, thank you to, to Bridget for making sure we get our, get our maps up and, and able to see the presentation. Just a, a couple of quick questions. I'm sure staff wants to respond on things, but, and I think I might kind of get at some of those. But could you just speak to what the source of this map and what this data was, and...
So, we, we appreciate the comment that, about the map, which is why we used a base map that has been a public document since November in 2018. This is the source map. It's Figure 61, Sheet 2 of 3 in the Land Use Plan, Chapter 6, Natural Resources. And this was produced by the Huffman Broadway Group. This is the habitat map. We drew the blue boxes over the two portions of the proposed program area. But other than that, it's not altered from what, what Huffman Broadway found to be the habitat. So, the aqua being wetlands, the brown color is coastal riparian scrub, the yellow kind of straw color is coastal scrub, and the kind of lavender color, the purple color, is non-native grasslands. And that, that was field-checked by Huffman Broadway. They were actually on the property. And it's true, they did, they did not do a new delineation. We did, we did not want to misrepresent that. That's, that's right.
Well, maybe, maybe you could speak just for the, the public's benefit. Could you speak to what technically a delineation is versus...
Perhaps, if I could, I just wanted to, to respond in a different way, and then we'll go to that point, if that's okay with the...
Okay. That is, that is fine.
So, last week, two questions were posed to Mr. Deggie, who is available by email from where he is. And one of those being, is there, this is question one. Is there a risk that goat grazing program could eliminate wetland indicator plants and/or make it difficult to find such plant evidence of wetlands? Question number two, would time of year affect this? For example, is the dry season, we have specifically, specified adequately safe, so as not to eliminate, reduce, or make difficult to identify wetland indicator species? Big piece of delineation, obviously. And, you know, we're dealing with two situations here. One being the single indicator, that's the coastal act, and the typical three indicator for a non-coastal areas Army Corps. But that being said, and I'll answer with the, with the answer that was given by Mr. Deggie. One is, he says, "I will say I'm confused by the questions. They may be relevant if there was an ongoing effort to delineate wetlands, but this is not happening. Grazing will not change the topography, so wetland plants will continue to grow where the water settles. Seeds of wetland plants will remain in the soil and continue to germinate where topography and hydrological conditions are right." So, those are the basic issues of, of, again, what his research, what the research of others has said, is that this will not change the nature of wetlands. And the wetlands are there. No one's arguing this. This is a open space piece of land. No one's proposing anything. And frankly, I'm surprised that we're having a conversation about allowing a mower to take out 30 feet of, of the boundary and saying, "That's okay." But we can't put goats on portions of this property, which is by far the better answer to this, in, in everyone's opinion that I can find, other than tonight, with the, with the, with the folks in attendance in their letter. So, I understand there's a lot of history here. That, that I get. But there, I think, at some point, you have to step beyond the history and say, "What are we trying to achieve and what are we trying to address here?" No one is trying to destroy, eliminate, modify, or impinge upon what's existing and what's there, and that is what we propose to do. Now, I wanted to pull up CAL FIRE, because there, there's a reason for the 100 feet.
Thank you. That's going to be the next question.
And wildfire, and I, and basically what there are to... It's not what I wanted. Wildfire.
Just relax, please. It's, we'll get there. Please, Hal.
John Dowey's going to find a graphic that presents something that's in your draft land use plan in the hazards chapter, coastal hazards, which distinguishes between a 30-foot setback for vegetation management and a 100-foot setback for vegetation management. The 100-foot setback is clearly going to become standard. We can see that it might not even be enough, having observed what's happened in wildfires recently. recently. But we're seeing a hundred feet throughout San Mateo County. There's signs, there's a sign on Edgewood Road, I see every morning, white, one hundred feet. And once John, um, he had a, I, uh-oh. We're trying to share this with you. It's, it's a very good description of it. In the, in the thirty feet, there's really not supposed to be any vegetation really whatsoever in the first thirty feet. It's a really, um, mowed down is, is what's been done in the past. In the hundred foot area that, so the distance between seventy and a hundred feet is, is zone two. And in zone two, vegetation can be, can remain, but dead vegetation and piled up duff and other kinds of, um, you know, too much vegetation, that's what goats do. That's what they take care of. And so that's, that is the intention, is to create the condition of, um, what you see here in, in the zone two.
Okay, very good. Staff like to respond to anything else, or will you bring it back to the commission? Okay. Um, okay.
What, John, that, that's an interesting graphic. What do they say about zone two?
So for the sake of the audience, could you just make sure to read that?
Sure. Cut or, zone two extends a hundred feet out from building structures, decks, et cetera. So the first bullet point, cut or mow annual grass down to a maximum height of four inches. Create horizontal spacing between shrubs and trees. Create vertical spacing between grass, shrubs, and trees. Remove fallen leaves, needles, twigs, bark, cones, and small branches. However, they permitted to a depth of three inches. Again, these are, you know, these are recommendations, uh, but they are consistent recommendations throughout. Um, I, I, you know, as we've looked at the various wildfires occurring, I don't want to, I'm, I'm not trying to put fear and fear mongering out there in any way with this, but this is the reality where we are. This is why the fire department is concerned about it. And every spring, the, many of the neighbors, maybe not, um, the ones in attendance at tonight's meeting, call and ask, when are you going to do something about the vegetation adjacent to my fence? And how are you going to protect me when the fireworks start going off at Fourth of July? And, you know, and those are the concerns and issues with that. Um, that is the reason we are here tonight. Nothing more, nothing less. And, um, as I've said in the report and previously, uh, we consulted with both Huffman Broadway and another biologist who have indicated that we should not be mowing, um, in that area. We do not have protection for any kind of take for an endangered species. If there is a take as a result of weed whackers, mowing, any kind of mechanized equipment, we could be subject to significant fines as the city. Um, and that's a concern, and that's an issue that we have. That's why we ultimately fell to this. Um, this is not the least expensive option. This is within the realm of, of, of financial acceptability. But certainly, I think, being vigilant about protecting our environment, about protecting endangered species, this was the least impactful that we could find.
Thank you. Um, so I was just going, I wanted to respond to a couple of things. One, I, the, the question about transparency, um, and I think, you know, that's always something that's, um, of interest to us, and I think staff shares that interest. I'll just note the correction notice from the fire protection district dated May third. Um, and here we are, May twenty fifth or sixth, or whatever the date is today, twenty eighth. I know how busy you guys are, so, uh, you know, I think, you know, I think having the habitat map in here, you know, some of those things could have been helpful, but, um, but that's something that's familiar to us. We've reviewed those habitat maps many times in the past. Um, it's been part of the public record. We've had public workshops specifically around those habitat maps, where actually the public could come out and was really supportive and, and, um, thankful for the amount of work that was going into mapping the habitats that were on the property. So, um, which, again, were by the same, um, same biologist. I'm not necessarily a stranger to this. I work for the East Bay Regional Park District. We graze, um, you know, hundreds some thousand acres in that area, mostly with cattle. Um, but, uh, but we do grow grazing as well. Um, and all of our areas are different, different species types, but California red-legged frog, California tiger salamander, um, Alan meter whip snake, so we have our snakes too. Um, and the studies that we've done over the years have really shown a beneficial impact from, from grazing, um, on those species. So the question came to me about, yeah, the, the more floristic species, wetland, uh, plant species. So I did touch base with a couple of the biologists that I work with, um, just before coming here. And their questions were exactly the same questions that John had posed over to Mr. Dagie, was about, um, the season that they were grazing, um, whether it would be, um, actually changed the existence of any wetlands, um, anything like that. And essentially had the same conclusions as, as Mr. Dagie. So, um, I was comfortable and confident to be reassured for that. But I think staff has worked pretty hard here, from my perspective, to actually go the extra mile to have a biologist, um, monitoring and, um, and then even going to this extent to actually limit grazing throughout the rest of the property. So I'm generally of the mind that, um, you know, land doesn't need some management. If you let it go run, it's going to be, you know, invasives and clog out, and we could lose the wetlands altogether or something else. So, um, and from what I've seen of Mr. Dagie in the past, um, and, uh, uh, his work on the LUP is that his work has been pretty widely supported and, uh, and spoken favorably about, um, from members of the environmental community. So that gives me a lot of confidence in him, um, that, uh, that his recommendation is here. So, um, so with that, I'm, I'm comfortable, um, supporting the motion. At this point, also recognizing that, um, fire danger is real, um, and the impacts of not doing anything can be a lot more. So those are my comments at this time.
I think, I think our chair has been very articulate about the whole business. Um, I, I agree that the, the biologist in question on this farm has had a pretty good record with, uh, past work for the city. I, uh, I recognize, and I'm sympathetic to the, the neighbors and environmental groups who are concerned about wetlands and protection of them, but I'm, I'm willing to be guided by the biologist's report and what Chairhold has told us about, uh, similar input from other peers, that there probably is wetland vegetation in, in some of the areas to be grazed, but it isn't clear that it would sustain damage from the goats, especially if the alternative is, uh, mechanized mowing. So I, I agree with what Brian said so much more articulately, and I'm prepared to support it as well.
Okay, Commissioner Polgar?
Um, yes, I, I very much appreciate, um, what Chairhold had to say. I agree, um, in, I, I actually work, um, in my work as a conservation program specialist on the coast side with, uh, in these types of landscapes. Um, and I'm, I am very, I think this is a very appropriate approach, um, in this setting. I think it's well thought out and planned. Um, I, I mean, the coastal prairie landscape evolved with grazers, with herds of grazers. Um, and actually not having them is allowing essentially the conversion of our prairie grassland to coastal scrub. And to have a really healthy, viable, um, coastal prairie habitat, you need a good mix of the right balance of scrub, wetland, and grassland. But without the, the grazers, we've, we're getting a lot more of the, um, it's a, it's a native, but it's, it's very invasive. Um, we're getting the coastal, excuse me, coyote brush invasion. And so I, I'm very pleased from the perspective of managing these natural resources in a way to preserve the coastal prairie habitat. Um, I think grazers are a, a very appropriate approach. I think that, uh, they'll even, you know, I've seen this grazing, um, establishment on the, um, the, the railroad right of way and the landfill. It's, it's a very well-established grazing program, um, company. They do an excellent job. And I think that, um, I, I think we'll actually see over time, I think it's very important to recognize this, this is not a benefit that will suddenly, uh, you know, see benefits to the actual native, uh, bunch grass, perennial bunch grasses, or, uh, herbaceous perennials, the flowering ones. We, we won't necessarily see benefits like that immediately, but I think over time you could. And I like that there's an adaptive, um, an opportunity for some adaptive management over time. I think it's very well, the, the, you know, the monitoring by the, the biologist in advance to look for species is good. I do think that there's a, a trade-off a bit about trying to do it earlier versus later. I think, um, I understand the July fourth cutoff, and I think that's really important. I do think that the, the later a little bit that it can go is better in this for, from the perspective of, um, you know, nesting birds in, but by that, that time, you're at the end of that anyways. And so I think that the timing is, is actually going to work out fairly well. Um, and, um, I, you know, overall, I, I think that it's important to recognize that this is actually a management technique that is used to help, uh, maintain these habitats in, in good health, is grazing. And so it's used up and down the coast in a, and it, you know, grazing can be a negative impact on the coast side, on the coast, excuse me, coastal prairie, but in, in fact, it's actually well done. It's, it's, and this is well done. This will actually mimic how herds would go through. They kind of, they, they kind of mob it. They mob graze, and then they move along quickly. And that's what this kind of grazing setup would be. So I'm very pleased, um, and I, I feel very strongly that we can't ignore the fire risk. It's just seeing how, um, how dramatic it can be. And I, so I, I'm very supportive of this, uh, and I really appreciate, um, all the work that you did to quickly get this up to, you know, taking, in front of us. Um, so, yeah, I, thank you very much.
Great. Commissioner Hernandez, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, I will say that, um, Gary Dagie is our own goat, greatest of all time biologist in the Huffman Bay area. Um, but I, I, there's not much more I can add to this. I mean, I agree, there are always concerns about, are we doing the right thing the right way? And I think we have applied the right level of diligence here. So I have no other comments to add.
Great, thank you very much. I guess I would just add, you know, sometimes I think, I know this property, this area has a long history, and I think, you know, certainly we appreciate hearing the history. Um, I think there's sometimes a tendency on the part of the public to, um, jump to the worst conclusions and to, to think that perhaps, um, this staff or this commission or, or is the same as the staff or commission that was, uh, perhaps involved in this property in the past. I would just ask that everybody keep an open mind. It's my impression that, uh, this staff does actually have the right interests, um, in heart and work really hard to try to, um, to try to address that. And I think there's probably a lot of, um, benefit into partnering, um, in how we manage these areas rather than, um, making, um, threats and other things, uh, at the public. So, um, so with that, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the resolution, um, PDP, sorry, nineteen zero three three.
I second it.
Like, good chair, that would, um, that should note the, with the amended conditions.
With the amended, yes, uh, conditions. Sorry.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, let me go back to my agenda. Where is it?
Two-minute break while Jimmy returns.
I've got a request for a two-minute break while Commissioner Benjamin comes back. I understand, I appreciate it. No, I agree, it's.
Here, most of the time, you're going to see any of them.
Yeah. No, I know, it's frustrating, I know, it's frustrating.
Every time somebody moves here.
Yeah.
A creature that prepares wipes out the sound that is being, and you allow people to fund based, and you're out of possession. Every time somebody turns, you can't hear.
We'll try to, we'll try to make sure we cut that down. No, I appreciate it. I think, you know, I, I think it's, it's helpful if there's, you know, if more information is needed, you know, let us know if there's any questions.
It is always in order to say that a public meeting is not being heard by the public.
Yeah, absolutely. That's why we're here.
You can just raise a point of information.
No, I agree, and I, that was.
It wasn't intentional.
It was not intentional, I know.
I was not planning on it at twenty minutes to this, or six-thirty to have this problem. It took me like two tries to get it clear. It's like, yeah, it's. I'm like, it won't work, like, I can't get it to. Finally, like, I tried one more, shopping something, it worked. Anyway, it's technical, and it's like love-hate relationship technology.
Yes.
It wasn't, everything else was working honestly, and then this thing popped up, and I mean.
Of all the times.
And it was like not on the screen, so I couldn't hit okay. And I can't like, there's no navigation, it's just like menu, it's on the projector. So I'm like, I can't even hit okay. And they're like, hit okay. I'm like, I can't.
Can't.
And I would just, I know to hit okay. So finally, I like, reset it twice, and it like.
It decided.
Decided to work.
Appreciate it, man.
Oh, wow.
I'm sorry, but.
Oh, you'll, you'll find out.
Oh, put him on pause, or mute, mute the bottom, like, right, I think. He's on some weird dialogue.
All our coastal prairie are just getting converted into coastal scrub, and it's like.
Oh. I do have to say that we're like, we need to transparent. Like, the end of the agenda, I add, I added forests now to the web, to the website. So like, anything that comes in, you scroll after the packet and before that, like, I post it there so everybody can see everything. I know, you know, I just like.
There's always going to be.
And you can never, you can never please anybody. It's just like, it's life, like, in any, anywhere you're traveling.
I just, this is, this comes up against the, our protected areas. We should just leave them be. It's like, no, you can't actually do that. That's not taken care of, that's not stewarding.
Exactly.
So.
Like, our forests need that.
Yeah, you can't, I mean, they're, it's just not how it actually, I wish you're going to let them burn, everyone.
Just cover the whole, uh, uh, you know, say, the, just.
Oh.
And then, and then now we're going into the realm of the conversation, which, nobody wants to use it, nobody wants to use it. But, certain places.
Those bases, it makes like.
You know, to control the bases, and like, you know, out in the middle, you know, there's, you know, that's the tool in the toolbox, you know? And it's like, everybody recognizes, and it's just like, have all, and we've got a order, and what's the score being?
Oh, I know. Well, the, um, they're ready. Anyways, Cal Fire is, uh, work, they're starting, they got funding to work, um, do the El Granada, start on El Granada Eucalyptus, and saw that, saw that. Scares me, run out of me. Stuck in. Boom. Well, and then, it goes right over the hill. Like, it just continues right over the hill to the other side. Should we come back?
Okay, we're going to get started back up. Okay, we're going to start the planning commission meeting back up. Okay, we're going to start the planning commission meeting back up. Bring it back open here for our next item, which is going back to 1B. Appreciate folks letting us move that ahead. For a coastal development permit for the replacement of four existing stadium lights at the high school. Mr. Garrison. And just speak right into that mic.
Good evening, commissioners, for the record, I'm Doug Garrison, planner on.
Mic, right, get right up in there.
For the record, I'm Doug Garrison, planner for this project. A little bit of preliminary sort of housekeeping. There are actually two separate permits submitted by different applicants. We're giving one presentation because they are on the same property and they're, they started out as one project and then turned into two different projects, but for purposes of the planning commission taking action, there are two separate agenda items and there'll be two separate motions and votes. But for efficiency and also to get a more comprehensive look, we are just going to do a single staff presentation and go from there. So, as we can see here, the football field lights, there are four of them. There's an existing cellphone antenna that's mounted on, what's on the plans designated as, I believe it's P2, that's the one in the northeast corner, kind of right in here. And initially, this project, long before I was here, came in with four different options to replace the light poles and the lights, or to reuse the light poles and put new light fixtures on them, and another option, which was to build a separate fifth pole. And so, over the last year and a half or so, that got refined down to the project today, which is to replace the four existing poles with the metal halide light fixtures with four new poles. The existing poles are seventy feet tall, the new ones would also be seventy. The two on the eastern side will be moved a little bit to a slightly higher elevation, sixteen feet higher. The ones on the western side will stay where they are. The new pole for the cell antenna goes in this yellow area, there's, that's where AT&amp;T has their existing electrical cabinets, it's in a separate fenced off area that's leased from the school district. There are some cabinets there that are unnecessary at this time, they'll be removed, and the new antenna pole will go in the same location. There's existing concrete foundation there, minimal ground disturbance. So, a little bit of background, the football lights were installed in nineteen ninety-six, apparently without a coastal development permit. Last few years, the city received some complaints about the lights at night, and that's when, with some research, it was determined that there was not a coastal development permit. The AT&amp;T cell antenna, that actually was issued a coastal development in two thousand and four, and I believe it was on that pole earlier to that, but the record's a little murky there. So, two thousand and sixteen, the school district responded with an application to replace the lights. As I mentioned, as that project evolved over time, it got to still down to what's, the single proposal, which seems to optimize the lighting, as far as off-site effects, glare, spill over lighting, reduces the impacts and allows the school district to really improve the quality of the lighting on the field, which is important for the athlete's safety. So it's, from our view, a win-win. Where it gets a little convoluted, for other government entities like the school district or Caltrans, from a SEQA standpoint for environmental review, they are the lead agency. And if they prepare an environmental impact report and the city does not object to it, that is the certified DIR, and that's what everybody lives with. In most parts of the state, they don't come to the city to get permits. This is just a coastal anomaly where it's development under the definition for the Coastal Act. So the city is responsible for the coastal development permit. And so, it's a little bit, I think, confusing for some people how the whole SEQA situation works here. And it's important to remember that under SEQA, the baseline is what conditions exist when you start evaluating a project. So whether or not these lights had a coastal development permit to begin with, from a SEQA standpoint, it doesn't matter. We're looking at the change to the environment from replacing those lights now. And we also, sort of regardless of what the SEQA document says, the certified document, we're still responsible for going through all the findings for the coastal development permit, for the height variance, for effects on visual resources. So it's still a comprehensive review from the city's standpoint. So, again, four seventy-foot poles being replaced with four seventy-foot poles, brand-new LED lighting, and a fifth pole being put up for the cellphone antenna. This is a photo I took, as we'll see in some of the photo simulations, it's kind of hard to tell what's going on because you can only see the two lights that are furthest to the west. They stand up a little bit above the tree line. This was one place where I found where I could kind of see, it's only about maybe thirty or forty feet long, where you actually can see all four lights through the breaks and the trees. And so you can see, the two up here are the western ones, the two back in here are the eastern ones, and it's really, if you aren't standing in that one place, you don't really see the two eastern ones. We did ask for daylight photo simulations. The daylight view doesn't really change. The western, most lights, what are called P3 and P4, will be replaced, the same height, basically the same location, no change. The ones to the east, because of the elevation change, will be a little bit higher, but they'll still be screened by the tree lines for the most part. So we did this from Highway One as well as from Lewis Foster Drive, also did one from, it was in your packet, from Highland Avenue. Our policies focus on public viewing areas specifically for hillside impacts, where they cite Carter Hill as potentially a scenic resource. The zoning code specifically says they have to be evaluated for effects on views from Highway One and Highway ninety-two. So that was our focus. The additional simulation from over on Highland was done because of interest from neighbors in that area. For the most part, the daylight views have not really generated a lot of comments for the city, it's been nighttime lighting. And this graphic really nicely shows the existing conditions, and this is for glare. There are different kinds of light, spill overs, measured in foot candles, horizontal, vertical. Those, in part because of the large trees intervening between the residential area and the football field are very low, well below one foot candle, and with the new lighting, it goes down to point zero 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 something. It's, it's basically negligible. Glare is, is another situation. That's, that's what annoys people the most. That's, that's like headlights coming at you on a dark night. And so the scale on the bottom, the red is sort of the most intense glare, and then green is the least. And on the existing conditions, you can see the green extends all the way, you know, two or three blocks into this area, and the orange extends in, you know, kind of in a cone-shaped vision, and that's not coincidentally where we've gotten the most visual quality concerns raised by neighbors. And so with the new LED lighting, oh, a little bit out of order, but one of the comments we got was, why didn't you put up story poles? This is approved, we tried. There were liability concerns with constructing these seventy-foot-tall structures in the middle of high school with kids running around looking for things to break. And so we decided to try putting balloons up, and we, the weather gods do not smile for the last two weeks. This was the best weather window we had, with very light breezes, and the balloons were blowing over it basically horizontal. So, we're relying on the photo simulations and the photometric analysis rather than story poles in this case. But for the glare, with the new LEDs, it's, it's really a dramatic change. You can see, even the green, the least intense light, is all contained on the high school property, it's inside the tree line between the residential and the football field, really a dramatic change that's, I'll let the applicant can get into the technical matters of this if you want to go there, but essentially, with the LEDs, they've come a long ways. The initial ones, I think a lot of people had issues with, but they, they can dial them in, they can fine tune them, they can be remotely programmed, you can control the tone of the light to a certain extent. So this really is a dramatic improvement. And it also goes to the question of the height variance. This is a nighttime existing conditions, you can see all four of those lights quite brightly. This is down by Highway One and where Lewis Foster and Main Street all sort of come together. And then with the new lights, you can just barely see a glow from the, the two western poles that stand up above the trees a little bit, and the two eastern poles can't see at all. And one of the reasons is, you know, you learn a lot in this job about goat grazing and lights and something else every week. And it's a little bit counterintuitive, but from independent research I've done, putting the lights at a higher height actually reduces off-site impacts. Again, it's a little bit counterintuitive, but it changes the angle of the light, it's more vertical, it's coming straight down, as opposed to a more shallow angle where it'd be more like an oncoming car shining its brights at you. So that's one of the main reasons why we're supporting this height variance to go to seventy feet, is it reduces the number of lights that are required, and it also, it's optimized to reduce the off-site impacts. So, sort of the process we went through for the high school, we looked at visual resources, that was really the key issue. Again, we had daytime simulations, nighttime simulations. I'm not going to go through all the photometric graphics with the tiny numbers, but they were included in the packet. The, the current proposal really does bring off-site impacts down dramatically, to well within acceptable practice. Because the, the new poles are in areas that are already developed with the football, the track, field, roads, that sort of thing, very minimal ground disturbance, very low chances for erosion, no, no disturbing environmentally sensitive habitat areas. For the wireless, there's some overlap, we looked at the same visual resources. I would point out that there are no lights proposed for this cell antenna. So it was really about daytime reviews, not the nighttime. We did receive some comments on that, apparently in two thousand and twelve or thirteen, there was a proposal to put a new antenna in that general area, and it was going to have lights on it to illuminate the baseball, the batting cage area. And to make it clear, that was two thousand and twelve, this is two thousand and nineteen, that's not part of this project. We did amend a standard condition we have for wireless facilities, I believe that's C-ten, that states that they can't have lighting unless it's for safety by the FAA or the FCC, but it includes in the standard language kind of some wiggle room to put them in under certain circumstances, and we've just deleted that language that allows you to put lights in. At this point, it's not part of the project. You always seem to get some questions about electromagnetic emissions, health, that sort of thing. The applicant did prepare an evaluation of that by a qualified professional, it shows that the project would meet, comply with all standards. As I understand it, in speaking with the city attorney, there are some laws at federal and state level that preempt our ability to go into that to a certain extent. And again, this is in the area where they have a concrete slab, they already have the electric cabinets there, they'll be replacing those cabinets with the new cell tower. So that does dramatically eliminate egrading, erosion, ESHA effects. And so we did get a lot of comments, starting Friday and again today. I'm going to go through the high school first, because these are, like I said, two separate projects that'll take two separate actions from the planning commission. One of the comments was something I hadn't thought about, but in the past, the school district had been required to replace some trees after cutting some trees down, and the commenter was that, that the trees had not been replaced. So we sifted through city records and found that there were eleven trees required to be planted, and the school district did submit documentation in two thousand and sixteen confirming that they had planted those trees. I went out there Friday after work, because I'd never heard of these trees, and walked around, and I found five of them, and they were, if not dead, close. And so we have added a, a condition that requires, as approval for this project, that they replace any of those eleven trees that did not survive. These are four of them that, just, yeah, they're, they're kind of sad. But the other thing when I was out there is there are some very unhealthy Monterey pines, this one looks like it's about to fall over. Just as a safety issue, there were probably three of these that I saw in that area, and it, if we're talking about trees, we might as well just say, it's a safety issue, take them out, and you're also going to replace those. And we're sort of included, it's, it's a little bit late in the game, but we've included it in this project because it makes sense to look at all these trees together. And these would be places where, when these older dead trees come out, we would want to focus some of the replanning to beef up the screening in those areas. Here up above the football field, looking west, there, you can see some of these trees, there's some gaps in there, this is another area where we might require some of the planting to go in there to fill that in a little bit. You know, surprisingly, we didn't get a lot of comments on the lights, it was more about the trees. We've got a lot more comments on the, the wireless facility. So I'm going to walk through these. I know Jill responded to the planning commission with a couple of memos that went through this, so I'm going to, this was all stuff we were working on today when we received the comments, but one of the, the comments was there'd been inadequate noticing. I would point out that the city's noticing exceeds all the legal requirements. We were required to mail notices to properties within three hundred feet, we did more than that. Were required to publish the notice in the newspaper ten days prior to the hearing. Because of having a newspaper that's only published once a week, it's actually in the newspaper for fourteen days. And we also posted the site with a notice as required. There were, as I mentioned earlier, some concerns about that two thousand and twelve project with the lights. To make it clear, there are no lights proposed for this cell antenna, that's a different project, it's not this one. And again, we've amended the condition to prohibit them. There were some questions about where this thing was going to be located, whether it was up at the top of the slope, in the middle of campus, and I've got some graphics that show that. Because of having a newspaper that's only published once a week, it's actually in the newspaper for 14 days. And we also posted the site with a notice as required. There were, as I mentioned earlier, some concerns about that 2012 project with the lights. To make it clear, there are no lights proposed for this cell antenna. That's a different project, it's not this one. And again, we've amended the condition to prohibit them. There were some questions about where this thing was going to be located, whether it was up at the top of the slope, in the middle of campus, and I've got some graphics that show that, but it is at the bottom, it's at the toe of the slope, it's about the lowest elevation you can put it, tucked away pretty well between trees and other features. One question was about the distance from classrooms, it's about the same distance for the proposed from the existing. I assume that probably had something to do with electromagnetic, electromagnetic issues and I'll let the applicant discuss that. One of the interesting comments was that our policies and regulations protect visual views from public areas and they noted that the high school was a public area. And my response is that if you read through our code and our land use plan, the public areas they're discussing are coastal overlooks, bluffs, Highway One, Highway 92. If you look in the land use plan, the visual resource overlay map, the high school is not identified as a visual resource area or a public viewpoint of anything from there. So we think that's a overbroad interpretation of those regulations. There was another one that views from Silver Avenue, that area were not adequately evaluated. I went out there right before the meeting, took some photos and confirmed that it's, the cell tower's, it's not going to be visible from Silver Avenue. So just quickly, this is a map, the light green shading is the 300-foot buffer we would use for mailings. We've extended that in the light blue all the way down Silver Avenue to Highway One. So that goes well beyond what's required. As far as the, we actually received some photo simulations of the cell tower taken from inside the high school campus and we told the applicant, our policies all say we want to see how it looks from Highway One and Highway 92. And I didn't, so we didn't include these simulations with the package, but since the comment came up, seemed appropriate to bring them. And if you look at this, the top view, that's the existing light pole with the antenna right there. And then the bottom one is the new tower. And you can see it's, you can't see the base of it because it's probably 20, 30 feet lower elevation here, but it's a 50-foot-tall tower, so the actual total height is comparable to where the antenna is on the 70-foot pole. And again, if you look at before and after, the alignment looking over towards Silver Avenue, there's this huge grove of trees here that it's in line with and it's just really going to be well screened. This one, I didn't really have time to mark it up to show this, but sort of a bird's eye view. The cell tower's going to be over here. There's some stairs that come down this hill and it's fenced in area where the electrical cabinets are. So the area they were concerned about was up here on Silver Avenue and down towards Highland Avenue. And if you draw a straight line through here, what you can see is there are houses, there's thick stands of trees, it's just not going to be visible from those areas. This is looking from Silver Avenue over there, again, you're not going to be able to see it. So we're going to have two separate recommendations, one for the high school and then another one for the wireless facility. At this point, staffs recommend approval of both projects as amended with the new conditions that were submitted to you right before the hearing. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Okay. So I think the way we're going to handle this is, we have a presentation on two separate items, but I think we're going to hold a public comment period separately for each item, so we can do that. But I think if we have any clarifying questions, we can ask them for both items now, if that makes sense, makes sense to me. So go ahead. Commissioner Polgar.
I have a hopefully very quick clarifying question. So I saw that there was the additional or revised conditions for the wireless, oh, I see, sorry, I've answered my question, sorry. These are both, there's one for the high school lighting and one's for the antenna. Okay, great, apologies.
So just for a point of clarification, these photo simulations that we have that are from Highway One do not include the antenna?
They do include the antenna, but you can't see it because it's buried behind all the trees. There is a label and a directional line that says where it would be, if you could see it.
Commissioner Benjamin?
So thank you. So I wanted to ask about the, a little bit closer analysis of the glare. Am I being heard okay, is this audible? Okay, thank you. So, you know, Half Moon Bay gets clear days in which we can get glare and we get foggy days. And I wonder if there's any difference between the status quo in a foggy situation and the new LED lighting in a foggy situation? Are we going to still get that sort of cloud of, that amorphous light?
The independent research I've done did not go into that depth, I'm going to defer to the applicant's technical.
Okay, I'll wait on that. And then, did you want questions about the antenna at the same time?
Yeah, I think we can answer questions on the presentation at this time.
Okay.
And then we'll just consider the items and have public comment period for each item separately.
Okay, so, and then on the antenna question, actually I guess it's related to both. With respect to the technical difficulties that were cited and then clarified, just to be super clear, there's no electrical or mechanical reason, but rather bureaucratic complications that would limit the ability to have a cellular tower, once again, like it is now, installed on the light pole, is that correct?
I'm in part going to defer to the applicant on that. Most of that occurred before I was involved with this project. My understanding was it was partly bureaucratic, but also...
I'm sorry, let me rephrase. I didn't mean what happened before, I meant what we're looking at now. If we, you know, if we could live a wand and all of the bureaucracy could be resolved, there's, to my knowledge, and I'm asking if it's also to your knowledge, is there something that would keep them from putting the wireless tower on one of the four light poles?
I think I'll defer to the applicant to explain what they went through on that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Commissioner Hernandez has a question?
Yes, so, thank you for the material, thank you for the staff support, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this. When I look at this project and I think about the fact that my oldest child already plays on the soccer field and should be a freshman at the highest school next year, I ask the obvious questions about radiation levels associated with cell phone towers and I'm not a litite, so I understand how these things work. But I wonder, just as an act of precaution, would it make sense to move the cell phone tower further away from the classrooms and further away from Silver so that the long-term effects of any radiation, which, you know, we're learning about these things as we go through time, but I'm just wondering if it makes sense if we can move the cell phone tower a little further away from the classrooms and a little further away from the residential units, if that makes sense? That's my primary question for staff and I submitted this earlier, so hopefully folks have had a chance to think about this question.
I raised that question with the applicant today and some of that I'm going to defer for them to respond on. I will say that when we start looking at different locations, it's sort of like pushing on a balloon. When you move it to one location, maybe we're less concerned about the, you know, radiation issues and, but it raises new issues with visual resources or it gets into an area where it's not already paved and we'd have to do maybe some substantial grading and, so there are, as you start poking at that, it's not clear what the, you know, how the trade-offs balance out for me right now. It's more of, not so much a technical issue, but at this point, AT&amp;T's been required to relocate the antenna because the school district is saying that it's not going to work very well on the light pole. This is an area that they already have a lease on and like I said, there is a concrete foundation there they can work with. As far as sort of the more technical questions about electromagnetic frequency and that sort of thing, I'll defer to the technical experts in the room today.
Great, thank you very much. So one question that I saw that had come from the public and it kind of gets to, I think, some of Commissioner Hernandez and Commissioner Benjamin's question, is what is the role of the state architect in relation to the cell phone tower?
In this case, for the cell phone tower, my understanding is they intend to submit it to the city for the building permit. So we do have a geotechnical investigation submitted with it. If it's approved in that location, they would then move on to submitting the building permit to the city for review. The lighting would go through the state architect because that's a school project.
Okay, so just, so what you're saying is, just because it's on a school campus doesn't necessarily mean that it automatically has to go to the state architect?
That's how I understand it.
No? Oh, okay, then it does have to go. Okay, so we, I think we'll hear, so we'll, perhaps if you could provide that as a public comment, that'd be great, so we can get that on the record. So with that, I am going to open up the public comment period for item 1B. So we'll take public comments right now specific to the stadium lighting and then again, we'll come back and we'll open it up. Jill, did you have a question or a comment?
I want to make sure we give our, I think you said our applicant a chance to come up, I just want to make sure, yeah, so if they have anything to clarify, okay.
Okay, so the applicant on the stadium light.
High school lighting, yeah.
Great, thank you.
I think you, okay.
Well, I guess, yeah, if you can say anything that you'd like, in terms of, in terms of, for the stadium light project, but I think the one comment that was just made, if you could just sort of, if you have any clarification on the role of the state architect on this. There you go.
There you go.
Hello?
Yep, we got it.
Steve, if you want to talk about the DSA with regards to...
I'm the principal landscape architect and yes, everything that happens on the school grounds has to go to DSA, whether we're building a sidewalk or putting in a light standard.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicants?
Did you want me to ask the nexus about the wireless and the lights now, or do you want it during the wireless?
We'll defer to you on what's appropriate, on what's the best, what's the best time?
We'll hold on.
Okay, great, okay. So with that, we don't necessarily need a presentation if you don't, if you don't want one? I think we're all good.
Yeah, I'm here to answer lighting questions if there's any questions.
Okay.
So can I do the fog question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do the fog question, Joey.
We're doing the fog question, can you help us with that? So we got, today, you know, the fog comes in and instead of looking at a bright headlight, I see an amorphous cloud of lightness. In the new, brave new world of an LED light cast downward, maybe from a little higher, depending on which side of the field we're at, the fog rolls in, what do I see? Something different or the same thing?
Yeah, I don't, first of all, I'm Jason Denise with Musco Lighting and so I can answer any of your questions regarding anything with regards to glare, spill light, things of that nature. We're never going to hide the fact that you have a lit field, you're going to know that there's lights up at that field. I think the best demonstration we had earlier was the Candela values that we see going into the neighborhoods and then the light, how quickly it dissipates from the HID light fixtures to the LED light fixtures. Because we are concentrating that light directly down onto the field with regards to fog, yeah, you might see some of an aura, but it's beneath that 70-foot light tower where what you currently have right now expands above that 70-foot light tower, if that makes sense.
If I can follow up. So in contrast to, let's say for example, the greenhouses that we have on the coast where light is coming up, bouncing off of the floor of the fog as it's coming down and then returning to provide a beautiful, well, a canopy of light, we'll say, it sounds like we're going to have a different experience in this situation. As you say, there's something still noticeable, but, you know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, what exactly is the public going to see that's...
So what you're going to see is directional light onto the field. The analogy I like to use, the days of driving into the visiting town, you know, any visiting town football stadium, looking for the football stadium, you would see where that field's at. You can't do that today with these new LED fixtures. The fog is not going to exacerbate that above the fixtures and into the neighborhood, you're not going to have that effect. You may see a little bit brighter below the fixtures, but we're containing that light into that area like the graphic showed previously.
I see, so we shouldn't expect ambient light to suddenly dissipate out into a larger area? It's going to basically follow the lighting patterns of the radiant light that was modeled in the photometric survey.
That's correct. So if we were to go back to the one slide, you will see how we've actually aimed our fixtures so as to keep it from the property line. We identify the property line, we know what we're trying to avoid in terms of spill light and so you'll see the glare, once that comes up, you'll see how the glare shifts to the left and back towards the high school so as to keep it from the neighbors, that's the exact same thing. It's not going to, it's not going to go beyond that canopy right there.
Okay, and then one other question and then I'll yield. And that is with respect to the warmth or coolness of the light. I know that when LED lights first came out in some applications, they were perceived as somehow, I don't, harsh is maybe the right word, but for example, when people would use them in streetlights, there was a blueness or, I don't know quite the right expression, but it bothered people.
Of course.
And more recently, I noticed that we can get commercially warmer colors of LED lighting. What is proposed here and do we have a sense of whether it's tunable, if it doesn't quite fit, or do we have reason to believe that we picked the right color and we're not going to find people saying, gosh, it's harsh? You know, your athletes are the customers, so...
Of course.
I'm really interested in your opinion about this.
Sure, it's like when you go to Home Depot or Lowe's, you see your different Kelvin ratings for your interior fixtures such as these T5s or whatever you're looking at, you get to pick your color that you want for your indoor facility. We have found, not just Musco, we follow the engineering aluminum society, excuse me, the engineering society sets standards out there that we have to follow. 5700 Kelvin is what they have landed on as the appropriate lighting for safety and for viewing. So it's a wider light, that's why you don't need as much foot candles on a football field, that's what we have found to be the right mix for outdoor athletics is 5700 Kelvin.
Okay, thank you. No further questions? Okay, Commissioner Hernandez does have one additional question?
I really appreciate the way that you're doing with light vision in this project, it's fantastic. And I look at the way that the light recourses, you really manage that very effectively. As an amateur athlete, and again, as a kid, as a person who's a kid who's going to be playing on those fields very shortly, I worry about poor LED lighting and I want to understand like what, I know NFL teams use LED lighting to create effect, but I've also been on fields where LED lighting has been put into place with full effects. And it changes the angles, it changes the lighting, it lifts you up and you can get hurt. If you're playing football, if you're playing soccer, high-impact sports or high-speed sports, you can have all kinds of effects. So can you guys just walk me through, how are you addressing that? So can you guys just walk me through how are you addressing that from a perspective of like, you're addressing all the environmental concerns these ways or the planning concerns these ways? But again, the day the school district puts lights up, the kids can play sports, how are we managing that so the primary function in the school district's perspective is managed effectively?
Sure, of course, please.
As the landscape architect, we are the ones that decide which type of lighting system we're going to pick and it's our job to be the advocates for the school districts and the students and we research all of the things that are available. And Musco is a world leader in sports field lighting, so we really trust them. They do lots of our fields and they wouldn't be doing this field if, if they hadn't done good on other fields. So I think their track record speaks for itself, but then I'll let Jason talk a little more about their technical answer to that question.
Commissioner Hernandez, you sent an email earlier, is that right, with the very same question? Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic. So I got that question earlier and I'm just going to respond to you, sir, with the email I sent to the school district because I think it really illustrates what we do with regards to safety for our kids on a football field. And I'll just read this email so we can kind of, I sent it to the district. I said, "Quality of light is just as important, if not more important than the quantity of light. Our lighting designs follow IES standards," which I said, sorry, fumbled around earlier, "with Illumination Engineering Society Recommendations for Athletic Field Lighting. With that said, the current lighting at the field has 21-foot candles, 21.48-foot candles. IES recommends 40 to 50-foot candles for high school athletic football fields. With that said, the current lighting in place is 21.48-foot candles with a 2.06 to 1 uniformity, meaning one light level reading will not be two, or 2.06 times brighter on any given location on a field. So if I take a light meter out there and we've got 25-foot candles, you're not going to have more than twice the amount of light on any given spot. That's what's currently out there right now today. Our proposed lighting design will be 41.32-foot candles with a 1.45 to 1 uniformity, which is well below the 2.0, which is recommended by IES. Much, much better quality or smoothness or transition of light on the field for that exact reason. For that exact reason, Mr. Hernandez mentioned below, safety. We want the kids to be safe. We don't want them running around going from a dark spot to a light spot, from a dark spot to a light spot. We got a football being thrown at these kids, we have soccer balls being kicked, a lot harder than when I was in high school. So, so again, the quality of light is, is more important than the quantity of light and that's what we take into consideration with uniformity ratio."
Thank you for that.
May I follow?
Go ahead.
Thanks, so just, sorry to, erring on the side of caution because we all care about the students. So I get the, I get the glare and I get the quality of light issue when the light is directed down onto the field and they're not looking at the lights. If you're trying to get, trying to get your head on a corner kick or you're trying to defend a pass, you know, you're looking, you're, you're watching for the bomb, I know that if you're looking into a light, it doesn't matter whether it's halide or it's LED, it's going to be blinding. Is there a difference in the quality of the blinding or the risk of, of difficulties in seeing between these two kinds of lights or is it roughly the same?
No, so that's relative to pole placement on any given application. So you have glare zones and you have non-glare zones. So let's talk about a baseball field. You wouldn't put a pole in center field in the batter's eye because that light's coming right at his face, right? Just like we wouldn't put a light behind home plate because now the pitcher's looking at a light. Same with soccer fields and football fields. You place them outside of these glare zones or corner kicks like you talked about, which are traditional between, traditionally between the 15 and 20 yard line on each side of the field. So if I look up at the light, is it going to be bright? Absolutely it is. Is a corner kick going to be non-defendable because that light's right there? No, you'll be able to defend that kick.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, so in the interest of time, because I'm going to have to scoot out of here pretty quick, I'm going to open up the public comment period and we can tackle over this item and then turn it over for you for the next, if we're able to get there. So with that, I'm going to open up the public comment period. I've got one card specific to this item, 1B, it's Doreen Garrity.
Good evening, planning commissioners and city staff. My husband just passed out some photographs for you to review since we didn't have time to get this finished before tonight. Anyways, first of all, I am thrilled about the shielded lights on the football field. It's going to be great for the entire community. However, I do have four questions and hopefully some of the light people will be able to answer it. In the agenda, on page four, it states the east, easternmost poles will be relocated approximately 40 feet to the east and the base elevation will be increased by 16 feet. Thank you, you did state that. But my first question, it looks like on the diagram, those two poles would be on the blacktop aligned with the home bleachers? And if so, is that correct? It's really hard to see on, I had to get my magnifying glass, it's really hard to see where those two poles are going to be, so that's why I wanted to ask that tonight. If they are going to be located on the blacktop, that will definitely change the view of the high school and the football field from the blacktop. And my, my second thought is the lights on the two poles are going to basically be 86 feet above the field. So my second question is, if the two poles are located, or the two poles' new location is elevated 16 feet, why not make the two poles 54 feet tall? The 54 feet tall poles and the 16-foot elevation will essentially make those poles 70 feet above the field. The lights will be 70 feet above the field. My third question, the light poles on the west side, on the visitors' bleachers are remaining 70 feet tall. Why do we need to elevate them on the east side and not the west side? And finally, the photo simulations that were provided on the report show excellent shielding of the lights from the field level and I believe from the highway one. There are no photos, simulations from the east, north, south views. And that's why I want to make sure to include photos that were taken from the upper part of Highland Avenue and the upper part of Silver Avenue. There's a lot of light spill. And that will come to my fourth question. Will the shielded lights minimize the light pollution in the south, north, and east locations? And with that, I want to thank you for your time and I'm looking forward to hearing some answers.
Thank you for that. Our next speaker is Pam Fisher, no? Okay, so we'll include you on item 1C, that's what you're telling me. Okay, so with that, not seeing any other public speakers on that, I'm going to close off. I apologize, I do have to get out of here and so I'm going to hand over the gavel over to Commissioner Benjamin. I'll just leave with, with my comments on, just on the sports field project is I think I really appreciate the benefits of this in terms of really providing a much improved situation in terms of reducing the amount of spill over and light glare. So, so if I were here, I would be supporting this item. Thank you, good night.
Okay, Rick, I've just moved to the center here. All right, so, he closed the public hearing?
Hey.
All right.
When you close, I have, I have a couple of questions, but I know you don't follow your cell phone, so when you have a chance, please follow me.
Okay, I will, I will do that, I will. In fact, if the commission, if my colleagues agree, I'd like to let Rick get his comments in right away.
Yeah.
Rick, you have the floor.
So how do we make sure, I want to make sure that the question is addressed, is how do we make sure the lighting is set up so that the applicants on the field have a good experience, the shadows aren't overwhelming? And I have not heard an adequate response on that. Maybe it is the primary function of the lighting to make sure that not only can the kids show up and play, but they can be safe and they can have a home field advantage when they're playing at home with the crowd. So help me understand that, if you can, please.
Okay, do you want, would you like me to gather more comments before inviting the applicant forward?
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll hold that question advanced. Comments, colleagues? We're deliberating on the lighting project.
No, no, I understand, but so we're racking up questions to ask because we have the comments from the public comment, the questions from the public comments, Rick's, and then I do have a question as well to add to the list.
Yes, well, so far we've got the questions from Ms. Garrity and we have Rick's question and now you get questions.
I get questions, okay. Actually, this slide that's up showing the glare of, with the new proposed lighting is, is good because I'm, I'm wondering, is the reason for the kind of blip of extended glare pocket that extends out at the top of the, I guess that's to the west, maybe on the, on the photo simulation, is that because of the trees? There's a gap in the trees or what, what, maybe that's something that I'd be interested in hearing from the applicant and the technical reason of why there's kind of a blip there and maybe on the south, or the, excuse me, the bottom of the, the photo simulation there.
So to both the west and the east is your question?
Yeah, just to understand the reason for that, yes.
Okay, and just one more time I'll ask, is, are you able to hear us clearly? Are you, okay, okay, good. Anything else, Commissioner Polgar? Commissioner Reddick?
Ms. Garrity had some interesting questions. I'm curious myself to hear about the difference in elevation on the east side versus the west side and the rationale for that.
All right, I, I took the liberty of asking my questions during, during preliminary questions, so I'll leave it there. In that case, barring objection, I'll reopen the public hearing to take testimony from the applicant. And clarifying, if we don't get Ms. Garrity's questions exactly right, we'll ask for clarification of that. Sir? Please.
As far as the east side poles, those are not in the blacktop, they're just inside the railing and the slopes. Thank you.
Really swallow the mic, you have to get into it.
Are we good? There you go. I've been accused of being a loud talker, so. Those east side poles will be inside the railing in the slopes, it will be out of the blacktop and out of the walkway. The reason that we do not use, we talk about pole heights, that's the actual fabrication of the pole, it's a 70-foot pole. We determine the mounting height of that pole based on the distance from the center of the field. I believe Doug did a good job earlier talking about, the biggest miss, I've been doing this for over 16 years, the biggest misnomer in sports lighting is I want short poles because I don't want to see the light. The taller the poles, the better for you guys. We're able to aim the fixtures down, we're able to get it to the center of the field. The east poles, I've got the dimension right here for you. The east poles are set back from the center of the field 170 feet. The west poles are set back 125 feet. So we have 45 additional feet on the east side that we have to compensate for, for the mounting height to get that light out to the center of the field while keeping it away from the neighbors on the north side property line there. That's the reason for differing mounting heights. It's the distance from the center of the field to the pole location. You'll also notice too, we have maybe one or two additional fixtures on those two poles because again, you're pulling light away from the field. We want to make sure we're getting the right quality of light out there as well, not just the quantity of light. The third question, I'm sorry ma'am, poles, what was your third question?
I think if I can paraphrase it and I know she'll give it to me if I misunderstood it. She was concerned that the photo simulation didn't extend that far to the north to address, you know, the picture showed the dissipation of light up to a certain point, but some of the neighborhood was outside of that photo simulation. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm guessing that maybe the areas beyond that saw even less candle power?
Yeah, are you referring to a simulation photo, is that what you handed to me earlier?
Record says yes.
I'll be perfectly honest with you ma'am, I, I didn't provide those simulations. We stay away from photo simulation because as Doug said earlier, glare is a sensation. We all see glare differently. It's not a knock on older people or people that wear glasses or people who have bad vision, we all perceive glare differently. Low beam headlights are 15,000 to 20,000 candela. High beam headlights are about 50,000 candela. When we talk about glare and keeping it away from the neighbors, that's why you see, I think this kind of goes to your question ma'am as well, we're pushing that light away from the property line. That's why there's a gap to the east and there's a gap, or to the west rather, and a gap to the east. Our fixtures are pre-aimed so as to put the light where we want it with the responsibility of being a good neighbor. We don't do photo simulations, this is a direct quote from our application engineer. I asked if we could do nighttime simulations at Half Moon Bay from highway one, from every angle you could think of. The response I got was we'd have to invest in a IBM supercomputer or have Lucas Films come in and do that for us because every one of our fixtures has about 250 diodes within that fixture. When we have 40-plus, 50-plus fixtures out there, think about all the thousands of rays that are bouncing all over the place and then you have to fill in the gaps from the field to highway one to give you a true picture of what it's going to look like. I would never provide a nighttime simulation of what we're proposing because if I hand that out, one person in this room, maybe half a dozen of us in this room, myself included, will say, that's not what this looks like. That's why we don't do that.
And I think the, the staff may have something to add to that?
I thought it was more relevant before he, before he started, but I just want to confirm with our commenter, Doreen Garrity, your question three and four, I think are really related and the, the point of question four is if these lights will eliminate light pollution from the east, the north, and the south. It seemed like that was relevant to not having seen a photo sim from those different directions and I don't, I don't want to assume that if that's wrong, but we didn't specify photo sims from those different directions because we didn't have a visual resource requirement. So we got photo sims from the directions that, for daytime, that were really required per our LCP. But in terms of the overall light pollution elimination, I'll defer back to our applicants here, but we believe that that's been demonstrated through the glare study and through the other photometric plans.
Okay, thank you. So to Commissioner Polgar's, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Polgar.
Just to clarify, I mean, this does say, this is a glare simulation, this is not a photo simulation. This is, this is the actual calculated glare simulation for the, you know, so you're referring to two different things. When you say a photo simulation, you mean something that's actually showing at nighttime, a picture from.
Correct, photo simulation, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because it says photo simulation and so that's why I was, no, I know it's not, I just wanted to be clear that this is your glare simulation as opposed to the photo simulation.
That's a powerful distinction, thank you. So then maybe to her, her question, just to clarify, the causes of the bleed to the east and the west, she was wondering whether that was the missing trees or if there was something else?
No, that's blatant on our end to redirect fixtures away from the neighbors. We knew that we could put it into the high school area and kind of that open field right there. I can't stress this enough, we have a responsibility to be a good neighbor and that's why we do stuff like this. That's why the light you can tell moves this way while still keeping safe playable light on the field for our high school kids.
So some, in some future, just to jump on your question a little bit, in some future situation, if we were to see development on that parcel sort of at the top of the picture where the glare is, if we, could we remedy that glare at all by growing some tall trees in that area or is this just the new normal for that area?
This, this glare analysis right here doesn't take into account any vegetation whatsoever, so anything you do is going to help.
So there could be a mitigation?
Of course. Of course.
Okay.
And this right here is not going to be a true picture of once it goes in because again, we don't take into account any vegetation whatsoever.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, uh, and then, uh, to, um, Commissioner Hernandez's question with respect to, um, how we manage shadows. Did you have something you wanted to say, or are you ready for an answer? I think he's ready for an answer.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I want to go to Commissioner Hernandez's fields that he's playing on because we do not, you, you, the quality of light, I can sit here and talk and be a salesman all night long, but the, the quality of light that we're putting out there in terms of the smoothness and the transition of light from a thirty-foot grid point to another thirty-foot grid point is going to be, like I said, one point four-four to one uniformity ratio. It's going to be smooth, it's going to be clear as day out there. You cannot eliminate shadows. Shadows are outside when you walk around. The sun creates a shadow, you have a shadow that follows you. If you have four poles out there, you're going to have four shadows. We just got done doing, um...
Go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, okay, maybe not.
Can I respond?
You have the floor, Rick.
So, are you a professional engineer?
Uh, no, I'm not. Professional engineer.
Somebody in your team are professional engineers who you represent?
Absolutely, yes, I'm an employee of Musco Lighting.
So, Mike's community wants to make sure that you do a spot-up job on the lighting, and that's what I want to make sure you're doing here, is to make sure that when the lighting is implemented, the representation works as you have conveyed it to us. And so, can you, based on the information you have in front of you as a representative of your company, can you affirm that to us that this is going to be top-notch experience for our kids?
Absolutely, one hundred percent, we'll back it with a twenty-five-year warranty.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, um, let's see, commissioners, are there other questions? Rick, anything else?
I have a follow-up on the trees.
You go.
So, um, I've, I feel like the elder statesman here for the, uh...
That's very nice of you.
Um, setting aside consistently elder statesmen, Jimmy's been on the commission longer than myself, but, um, we've had a number of issues come up about trees, at the middle school, the high school, the elementary school, and the immediate, the, um, the Torositos High School as well. And there have been many promises made about what the school district is going to do about trees, and I'm really disappointed to learn that on the high school, we're failing to meet those obligations. I can see for Cunha, we failed to meet obligations that were made before, and for Hatch, I know with absolute certainty, promises that were made have not been met by the school district about replanting trees that were mowed down for whatever reasons by previous administrations. And I want to understand, like, look, we own the Black Hills, the mountains, but the, the tree scape are an important part of our community, and the school district's ability to manage these in a comprehensive and intelligent way is important for us. And I understand that the school district section is working to make that happen because it's really disappointing as a community member and a, and a person whose kids are going to be in the schools, so like, what is, the school district is not meeting up to obligations. So, can you guys help us understand what you're doing from a big-picture perspective to manage the trees and make sure that you're fulfilling the commitments you've made in previous planning commission meetings?
Uh, okay, Rick, I think we got the question, and a member of the school district staff and the landscape architect have returned to the dais. Some of the, some of the concerns you have were outside of this particular permit, but I understand that your concern is that the conditions of prior permits haven't necessarily been completely honored. Commissioner Polgar?
I, I do think though that it is relevant for this, um, discussion because, um, I do think that the management of the trees that are around the west side of the, um, and north side of the, um, the field matter for how the, the, the light, I mean, even with the reduced glare, I still think they matter, and, and so, it, it's, I do think it's a very relevant, um, question for this, and also affecting just the views, daytime views of the poles, et cetera. So, I, I, I think it does, it is very relevant, actually.
Yeah, I wasn't disagreeing with respect to these, I was thinking of the ones at Hatch, you know?
Oh, sorry.
And, th- those are quite pertinent from a, from a, from a broader point of view of how do we enforce the conditions of our permit, but that's probably more of a question for our staff than for the applicant in this case. So, I'm going to, uh, invite the applicant to respond to the questions with respect to trees on this project.
He's going to address the high school first.
Thank you, that's really the key here.
Yeah, I have direct knowledge of those eleven trees. Steve Sutherland, Principal SSA Landscape Architects.
Yeah, thank you, can you move a little closer into the mic so everybody can hear you?
Can you hear me now? Is that better? Um, I have direct knowledge of the eleven trees that, uh, unfortunately, some have perished or are not doing well. Uh, those were put in, uh, when the baseball field was done, and I believe they were not put in with irrigation. It was a, uh, last-minute addition to the project, I think, um, when, when we were working with the neighborhood, I don't remember the exact details of it, but I'm pretty sure they did not have irrigation, and it would be simple to remedy that with any, uh, trees that you require as condition of this, to add irrigation to those, and that I don't think would be a, a problem in the future. I don't know about trees on other sites, but, um, that I know would be a different result.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm going to add, invite staff to comment more broadly if you wish on, oh, I'm sorry, yes, of course, additional comment, Rick, from the school district.
Yeah, hi, my name's Haley Guerra, and, uh, I work for the school district, and I've been there for two years, so I wasn't here when the eleven trees were planted, that's why, um, he spoke. Um, so, oh, regarding the other trees, um, so at Cunha, we just took out anywhere from twenty to thirty or over thirty trees that were dying or diseased and unsafe, um, and we made sure to take them out before the winter storms, um, which was a good thing, and we replanted, I believe, thirty-eight, don't quote me because I don't have it with me, but it was a high number like that. So, those were replanted, and it was done in a timely manner, and I was the one who was pushing it along with the city, um, to make that happen, so they didn't go endanger the students during the winter storms. Um, regarding Hatch, Torositos, I wasn't here when all those trees were taken out, but we break ground on the new kindergarten building this summer, um, and we also will be doing all the landscaping, so we are replanting those additional trees that were taken out. Um, and, yeah, so all those trees, um, and additional trees will be planted, and we have provided, um, I believe the landscape, uh, plans to, uh, the city already. So, all those will be replaced.
I see. Okay, huh, thank you, Rick. Yes, Rick?
So, again, um, going back to Hatch and the trees that were removed from the Hatch project, they were not done with a permit, and one of the conditions of approval for the Hatch project was that there was a three-to-one ratio of trees for what was removed to be replaced. And we can go through the minutes of the meetings, but I want to make sure that folks who agree understand that there's an expectation that that commitment that was made during a planning commission meeting will be followed through with. And I don't, like, look, I'm the last person to establish some kind of overhead for a public school district, my kids are going to, but you guys have made a commitment, you did something appropriately, and you made a commitment to correct that, and there are trees that need replanted, and there are multiple that were removed.
Rick, I think you're breaking up just a little bit, um, but I, I think we may get your point. Um, I'm going to invite staff, our staff, to respond. Um, thank you for the, for the comments, and, uh, try to, I want to, I don't want to minimize the concerns that are outside of this permit, but I want to be sure we stay focused on this permit as well.
And that's part of the staff comment, thank you, Vice Chair Benjamin, for reminding us that we have an agendized item for the high school property, the lights, and then later the cell antenna. Um, staff can bring an update regarding, um, the other school district properties and a future director's report. I do want to note that we have enjoyed working with Haley and her, her folks who have prepared, um, really much better plans than we've seen, um, from, from previously, um, kind of ideas about replacing trees, these are, these are real plans for replacing trees, and we're seeing follow-through, and it will help us in our job, for example, on this project in terms of any conditions that you may have for tree planting. Uh, you'll note that, uh, Steph has a, in this new condition, we are specifying for your consideration a three-year monitoring period to ensure that the trees are self-sustaining at that point. This was assuming that, once again, they might not be irrigated, sometimes in, in large landscapes like this one, maybe they wouldn't be, but what we're hearing is perhaps that it's, it's feasible and affordable, so there's different ways of doing it, but we, we would like you to, to take a look at that, and we're more confident now that this can happen.
I, I'm sure I speak for Rick, uh, the other colleagues, that we look forward to seeing the conditions on those other projects, but we'll get that update when it's noticed. I appreciate the constraint. Rick, is there more?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, anything else? Commissioner Polgar?
Um, I, I appreciated the addition of the, the trees, um, condition in the, for the high school lighting. I, I would note that it, the monitoring implies that they, that if something were to happen, that they didn't survive, um, that they, that you would replace them, but it doesn't actually say it. Um, so, I mean, frankly, like, you can monitor, but that doesn't frankly say that you, you want them to, you want to make sure that they reach self-sustain, essentially, the point is, you want it, want them to be self-sustaining, and that may involve irrigation, um, and that's really, that, that could, that's kind of up to the, the professionals to decide, but, but, um, or the, you know, and figure out, but I just, I think the point is, you want them to be self-sustaining. There's always stuff that can happen that a tree can die, but I'm just, like, that's the point of it, and so, that's the only thing I would note.
Uh, anything else before a motion? Okay, somebody make a motion.
If you are the topic...
I don't think she can make a motion. Oh, there was someone talking in the background, sorry. So, I, maybe I'll just comment briefly and say, I, I thank the applicant for the project, I'm supportive of this project. Uh, I think that it's a, it's going to be a real asset for, um, the neighbors, but especially also for the students, and it represents a, a level of cooperation between our agencies that is really wonderful, and, uh, I appreciate the work that's, uh, gone into this. I think it's a well-thought-out project, and I'm, I'm confident with, um, the concerns with respect to getting the, you know, addressing surprises when they come up, the way Commissioner Hernandez asked, and being sure that the vegetation that's put in, uh, that Commissioner Polgar raised, um, I think is going to stand us in, in good stead. Um, so, I, I intend to support the project, but I can't until there's a motion and a second.
All right, I'll make a motion to, that we approve the, um, resolution, um, PDP sixteen dash zero five four with the addition of the, um, trees, uh, condition, um, with the minor modification we noticed, no, uh, I mentioned about the, um, tree survival or self-sustaining, reaching self-sustaining status, so...
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any, any further comment? Discussion? Okay, okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hernandez? Commissioner Polgar?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Riddick?
Aye.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Benjamin?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next item we'll be discussing is the, um, the cell towers, we've had the presentation, and I believe staff would like to comment briefly either on the one we just finished or the one that we're about to hear. Oh, I'm not in the microphone, sorry, I've got to get my semaphore right. So, uh, what I meant to say was, we'll now move on to consider the cellphone tower, and, um, anytime I drift away from the microphone, I will not be offended if someone shouts, "Point of order, speak into the microphone." So, um, commissioners, uh, what are your thoughts about this? Do you have additional questions that you would like to, uh, raise? I guess, I never closed the public hearing, so technically it's still open on the, um, we reopened it for comment a while back. We're going to close that public hearing now.
Permits, yeah.
And now we are moving on, sorry, I, it's been a while, I'm rusty, so now we're back to the cellphone, uh, tower item, and, uh, comments, questions. Commissioner Riddick?
Uh, well, was it, was it said that we would hear more detail about the reasoning for constructing a standalone tower? I'd be very interested to know more about that.
Would staff like to answer?
Um, I, I'm going to, uh, defer to the experts on that.
Yes, of course, so if you could, uh, identify yourself and let us know your thoughts.
Can you hear me?
Uh, if you get closer to it, we will.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Hi, I'm Alyssa Ferris, I'm with AT&amp;T. Um, the, the proposal for the location and the standalone project, the standalone pole, um, specifically to get us off of the existing light standard in order to be able to remove it, um, and to the new pole so that we were not on the new light pole because there's actually a substantial amount of weight on those antennas, and it really impacts it both visually, as you can see there, um, as well as structurally, and these Musco lights were already structurally engineered, um, so to go back and try to redo it in a manner that both looks good and is structurally viable is incredibly complicated. So, it was, seemed simpler and less visually intrusive to try to go with a proposal for a standalone pole. I don't know, Haley, you want to do that?
In order for us to get this project done, um, in a timely manner, it made more sense to separate the two instead of having the tower, the cell tower on one of our existing poles. It is rather complicated getting AT&amp;T engineers and our engineers together, uh, to make all that work, and the time that that would take would put the project out probably like two or three years. Um, also, our lease is up with AT&amp;T, I think either next year or the year after, so it also is cleaner and makes more sense to do it this way. Um, so, and I, I think the location of the new pole is ideal, especially since it's encased in the already existing AT&amp;T, um, enclosurement, and also because, um, it's , uh, level with the road down there, it's not at an elevated height or what have you. Um, and, uh, yeah, so that's all I can say on the pole location, but I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, don't go too far, we may have some more. Anything else, Commissioner Riddick?
Uh, maybe, maybe I'm dumb and it's late at night, but I didn't understand your reasoning that, First, First Lady, and it, how, is it, is it true that the engineering difficulties you're talking about and the timing are both... timing are both active reasons for this?
So, AT&amp;T is a very large corporation, and it was cleaner to go this way, especially since our lease is up in the year, I think either twenty, I think it's 2021. So, it's, I think it's in the school district's best interest to go this route, and it also is, visually looks better, otherwise you'll be seeing the cell tower up on the poles that are at the higher elevation. So, and in order to get this done in a timely manner, because those lights are constantly going out on us, the current ones, and to have people come out and replace those bulbs is really expensive and costs the district a lot of money, so if we extend it for another two years, which is what we calculated when we had meetings with AT&amp;T, we decided this was the best way to go.
If I can just piggyback on your question for clarity, just to be the devil's advocate here, suppose that we ask the, you know, we, if you could engineer the pole anticipating that it would be heavier, you know, because it would be carrying, you know, one or more cell antennae, then you would be able to work out the particulars of the cell tower installation without getting in the way of the lighting tower installation. In other words, I'm trying to detangle the logistics, or if, my sense is that the constraint you're talking about is, it's hard to put in a big mast for the lighting tower. My thinking is, it's just putting in a bigger mast.
I'm not sure I totally understand your question.
Okay, well, we'll get back to it.
Okay.
Commissioner Pogar, do you have questions?
Do you want to move on?
Carry on if you want it. Go.
Well, I guess, are the poles for the lighting, are they a prefabbed type of pole? And so they come in seventy foot, and that's the way they are? And so they're, they have the engineering, they've already had all their engineering specifications?
So, we were moving along faster than AT&amp;T could keep up with, because they, I mean, they're a big company, right? I'm not speaking badly about AT&amp;T, it's just a reality. And so, for example, with those poles, if we're going to put, like, a tiny security light at a low level, you know, on the east side, we have to calculate for that. So anything that goes on that pole, I've had to provide specifications for, to Musco lighting, so they could engineer the pole that way. So, the speakers we're putting on, which are new speakers, they've had to get all the specifications, even for the brackets of anything going on that pole. So, for example, I'm thinking in the future, if, just to be, one thing we did is, I made sure we had extra brackets on every pole in case we ever need to attach something to that pole, such as a camera, or I don't know. So all that had to be engineered ahead of time, and it just, our scheduling didn't quite work, especially in relation with the lease, too. There was, we had some things to work out, so.
Okay, I think, I think I understand the answer. I'm not sure how clear yet, but.
Okay.
I think I get where, I'm not sure we're going to get more there right now. Other questions? Sarah?
Well, there, I thought that Rick, Commissioner Hernandez, had a question regarding the frequency, the, you know.
RMF?
RMF. In terms of placement of the antenna and with respect to the classrooms, and whether there was a way to minimize or reduce that effect. So that's another question I didn't want to lose track of.
So with apologies to Robert Truell Water, I will open the public hearing to allow those questions to be answered now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not you, it's me. It's my fault. Carry on.
My name's Steve Anderson, I'm with Waterford Consultants, who are engineers who do RF safety studies and training. AT&amp;T asked us to look at this project, and we, based on the proposed operating parameters, they, their proposal will be compliant with federal safety regulations. The FCC puts out guidelines on how to perform those assessments, and those are the methods we used in our analysis. That, that approach depends very much on distance. At any given location, the exposure level is based on distance from the antennas and the power directed to that, to that location. So, to answer the question, distance is, dictates the exposure level. So, you know, we did our analysis for the location that is proposed here. If, if you were, it would, if they were in any other location, it would, there would be different results.
Rick, do you want to have a follow-on?
So, very thoughtful analysis, as always, from the engineers. Can we move, as a modicum of protection for our kids, can we move the location of the cellphone broadcasting location farther away from the classrooms and from Silver? That's my fundamental question. Can we do that without fundamentally impacting this project?
I think that this speaks to what?
Get really close to the microphone, please. You can, you can bend it down towards your mouth.
Oh, this part. I think that speaks to a point that was brought up earlier about balancing impacts. So the existing leased area and concrete pad that we have, we will just be drilling a new foundation basically on top of area that we've already disturbed. So when we go to a new location, that we have to bring utilities to it, significant amount of trenching, potentially disturbing areas that aren't currently disturbed, so it's a whole other environmental, you know, you start to look at what the environmental impact is going to be for that area. And so the place that we chose really has the least impact as far as new ground disturbance, new development. And that was really the main driving factor behind it.
To the chair?
Yes.
I agree with the redevelopment of the existing development of the school and housing on Silver. We should just move the tower to, the cell tower to one of the other locations a little further away. It's not a big impact to you guys, but it has an interesting potential impact down the road. Again, I'm not annoyed, I just want you to, like, minimize the impact to the kids who go to school every day. One of my kids is going to be part of, both of my kids are going to be part of that. So, that's why I'm looking for you guys to help us, like, just move the location of the tower a little bit away. Why is that such a big deal?
Where are you suggesting to move it? That's what I'd like to know. Honestly. Or if you have, because.
Closer to Main, closer to Main Street.
So on Keats property? Like, you mean off of school property, or by the parking lot? Like, where are you? Do you have other ideas?
The furthest away from the, the furthest away from the classrooms, and the furthest away from Silver. So, you guys are good at math and good at your location.
If you move it somewhere else, it's just going to be near businesses or homes? And there's a lot that goes into doing a whole new application for a cell tower, if I'm correct.
So, let me just ask you to direct your comments to the chair rather than to a commissioner. But I appreciate that you're saying there's a level of redesign thought that would go into the process. If I understood the commissioner's question, he wonders whether there are alternate sites that could be further from all of the potential sensitive receptors. And yes, it might be closer to a business, but a business that's already, let's say, a quarter mile away, as opposed to a classroom that is, let's say, a hundred yards away, might be, you know, it's a, it's an inversely proportionate of the square of distance.
And it's about coverage, though. If my understanding that this pole, what's the radius that this serves? The neighbor's here, correct? Yeah, so there's so much that goes into it. I've asked all these questions already to them, so that's why, yeah. And we did look at doing a cow, which is, but that was not a possibility at all either.
Okay, I think I have clarity. I'm going to hold the public hearing for a moment. I think I appreciate the concerns that you've raised, and I want to bring it back and hear what the commission is thinking about. Oh, excuse me. I'm so sorry. I'm so rusty. We have green sheets to go through on this. I'm such a clown. I beg your pardon. So, let's see. My first green sheet, so I'm opening the public hearing again. I have a green sheet for item 1B, that was Doreen. Did you, you've spoken already on this item, so that's the wrong stack. Here we go. Item 1C, Frank Garrity. And I apologize. Here you can get rid of these. Yes, Frank?
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. We appreciate your service and all you do for Happy Bay. Despite what I've heard tonight, I've still got a lot of concerns about this project. First of all, the photo simulations are just not sufficient. Despite what we've seen tonight, they just don't show the full impact of this frankly ugly tower to the school. There are no photos from the high school campus. There are no photos from Upper Highland. There are no photos from Upper Silver. There are no photos from the new development abutting the baseball field. And due respect to Mr. Garrison, that one photo from Silver, which is the first we've seen of it tonight, is just not representative. That's the equivalent of saying, my knee has no view of that bright light timer. Well, of course not, it's behind the house that was in that photo. You come into the house upstairs on all of Upper Silver and Upper Highland, now I've got a direct view of that new tower and the lights on the football field. So the simulations are not good. We need a story pole to show the impact of this tower, the view, who will see it from where. The reasons given that we're hearing for moving it from the existing tower to a new, an entirely new fifty-foot industrial tower in the middle of the campus, I'm just not hearing the justification. It's just not a valid reason to move this, this, to not put it back on the same pole that it was. I don't understand the technical factors. It's been on that pole for many, many years with no trouble. Put it back on the pole again. Better yet, move it off-campus. These things are on poles all around the Bay Area. You look at any high school over the hill in the Bay Area, they've got cellphone towers on them. Why can't it be done here again? Again, better yet, off-campus along Lewis Foster Drive. There are several up there already. Put them down there. They're not near people. I'm hearing that it's timely and easy. Well, that's not a reason to do something wrong. Don't do it fast, do it right. It seems to me you would want to minimize the number of tall poles and structures on the high school campus by maximizing the usage of the poles that are necessary to be there. Why would you approve another fifty-foot industrial tower in the middle of the high school campus? While it may not be legal designation that the high school's a public area, I believe it is. If not, it is definitely a Happy Bay location that draws many visitors from over the hill to football games, baseball games, the Artichoke Run, other track meets, et cetera. The high school is a beautiful venue with a view of the coast on one side, a view of the hills on the other. It is a setting that is a real jewel for the coast side. Visitors expect to see light poles on a football field, but this beautiful campus should not have a fifty-foot industrial cellular tower right in the middle of it. Just shouldn't. So, hope you don't approve this. Also, another point to address Rick's concern, if you put this pole off the, right now it's fifty feet up on a seventy-foot pole, it's still going to be fifty feet in the air, but it will be much closer to ground level of along the higher blacktop. If you look at that, right now it's fifty feet off-ground level. It will now be only thirty feet off-ground level, with people walking around, sitting at the baseball game. So it's much closer to people than where it is currently.
Thank you, Frank. Next speaker is Jane Krokowski.
Can you hear me? This good?
Thank you.
I'm Jim Krokowski, I'm resident of Highland Park. Thank you, Planning Commission and Commissioner, for giving us time. Thank you for giving us time to speak with you about these important issues. First, I've got three points to raise. Two are really confirmatory, and one's related to the use permit findings. On the confirmation side, Mr. Garrison helpfully confirmed, I believe, that the tower itself is going to be placed at the elevation of the baseball field, and it'll be fifty feet up from that. It won't be up on the sloping hillside behind, behind the AT&amp;T electrical configuration. So thank you for that. Second, with regards to lighting of the tower, we understand that there's no lighting for this tower, as set out in the plan, and as Mr. Garrison reported, our understanding is that there's no current intent for lights in the future. And presumably, if there would be, that we would be notified and it goes through a standard CDP. So, no lights now, no lights in the future unless further notification. Third, third is with respect to the use permit findings. And this, I'm referring to Resolution Exhibit A, Section 7E, and the findings and evidence. There's a rule that basically talks about the adverse visual impact of utility structures, that this should be avoided by citing the new wireless telecom facilities outside the public view shed whenever feasible, and that the compliance is, quote, relying on the, quote, "mature evergreen trees" that surround the north and east sides of campus. Mr. Garrison, I'd ask you to please put up that first photo that you had of this plan, and it was called "The Project Location." Thank you very much for doing that. The project location, the first slide, way back in the beginning. Our concern basically is that the compliance here for the mature trees on the north and eastern side of the, of the campus is both creating or identifying a public view shed that is, the report, so the actual application of these lights, we believe that the public view shed is more expansive and less protected than represented in the report. The public view shed is identified in the report is basically, primary viewing areas are primarily from Highway One, Lewis Foster Drive, and portions of streets within Highland Park. Missing respectfully is the new Pacific Ridge development, especially the upper terrace just east of the baseball field. And if you look at this picture, the east is to the right, where you can see there is basically no trees present, and the north is to the left, where there are some trees. So our first concern is that the public viewing areas are too restrictive in the report. The second is that the trees in the north, we believe, are insufficient, and the trees in the east are almost nonexistent. The trees on the north, the demonstration for the insufficiency is exemplified by the eleven trees that were attempted to be put in, but were in, who are not successfully Request just ten more seconds here. To the extent that the use permit for this project relies on mature evergreens that surround the north and east sides of campus, we respectfully believe that this reliance is misplaced since the trees are currently inadequate. We believe a feasible cure is, of course, to plant more trees. And we believe that, well, I can tell you that members of the Highland Park would be happy to cooperate, but we also know that this project is for AT&amp;T.
Can you please wrap up your roar?
This is it, my last comment. It's for AT&amp;T, it's a for-profit company. They're doing this, you know, intentionally to make profits based upon the cell tower. To the extent that they're relying on trees that are supposedly surrounding the east and northern boundaries of campus, they should also contribute to ensure that there are in fact trees that are effectively there on the east and the north sides of campus to block the views of this tower. Thank you.
I think we get it. Thank you. The next speaker is Pamela Fisher. Pamela Fisher has waived her comments. The final speaker, green card I have, is for Paul Gregoriev. Good evening, Mr. Gregoriev. Anyone else who wants to speak, please fill out a green sheet.
Okay, there we go. Just a brief comment. It occurred to me, listening to the absent chairman's question, with all this engineering talent here, can we get any quantitative data about the signal strength being emitted by the transmitter on this tower as it moves? In other words, what, roughly what is the strength of the signal that's hitting the school from the proposed location of the tower? And if, as he suggests, we move the tower farther away, what will be the effect on signal strength? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There are no further comments, I'll close the public hearing, finally get that sequence right, and bring it back to the commission. If staff has any particular comments that they want to make prior to our deliberation, glad to hear them.
Yes, just one.
terms of federal regulations of cell towers. And so, if there's a substantial departure from the recommended resolution, I would request that you consider continuing the matter so that we can do some more legal research on the issues rather than imposing new conditions or outright denial.
Thank you. Any other comments from staff before we go to deliberation? Nope. Okay. Commissioner Pogar, any thoughts? Not yet. How about, how about you, Commissioner Reddick?
Well, I, to me, as a one-time frequent visitor of the baseball and football fields there, it seems like a really unfortunate, inappropriate thing to build there. You think of all those athletes, all those, all those families and students. I'm very sympathetic to the question of, are we certain this is the best location for this thing? So, but hard, hard for me to imagine that, that is the best location. I understand the complications it would impose on the school district if, if the requirement was to put it in a different location or on one of the new football light standards, but, you know, the fact that AT&amp;T is big doesn't necessarily have to mean that they're slow, one would hope. So, I'm, I don't think I'm prepared to support this at this point, and I'd, I'd like to see a process where we could make sure that we've exhausted all reasonable alternatives.
Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez, would you like to weigh in?
So, this is an interesting issue. If we decline this project, everybody who uses AT&amp;T, their cell phone coverage evaporates in the Happy Bay Area. And nobody has conveyed the exact implications of that to us, but I'm just saying, that's what's gonna happen, is we're gonna lose our cell phone coverage if you're an AT&amp;T user. Fortunately, I use Verizon, and my kids use T-Mobile, so they're all good. But, my personal...
For the record, he is joking.
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Rick.
But my personal experience notwithstanding, yes, there is a lot of engineering and research we can do that talks about what are the impacts of this. And the simplest thing to do from a project perspective is move it, move the cell phone tower, the location that is furthest from classrooms and furthest from Silver or existing housing in risk. If some future project comes along, or there are some people who go to Peak or other establishments, that's not as impactful. But let's just figure out, can we establish today a location that is furthest away from the classrooms and Silver that we can say, this is where the tower should be, and if the applicant's willing to accept that today, let's move forward. We don't need to do a bunch of analysis. Like, the ramifications from an engineering perspective are fairly minimal, but I want to like minimize things to teenage brains and existing residents on Silver as much as possible. So, if the applicant's willing to do that, I would just say, let's figure out what that location is, let's just move forward.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Commissioner Pogar?
So, I, I had a, I had a hard time understanding exactly the reasoning for why considering a different location was so, was challenging. The trade-offs to me didn't seem quite at the same level. So, I think that, for instance, I think that when you're talking about a, the kind of footprint of this, it's relatively small, and so, I actually don't know that to do a new pad, grading in a pad seemed like a massive trade-off, in a sense, compared to some of the potential impacts of having it closer to classrooms. So, that's where I'm not getting where the, the kind of key trade-offs really balanced out, where that, they could, you know, no longer looking at another location was viable. I, I don't understand the implications for cell phone coverage and service and stuff like that of moving it. I had actually, to be honest, misunderstood and thought this was just serving like the local neighborhoods or something like that in terms of cell phone coverage. So, maybe a clarification, is this serving all of town, or is this the only AT&amp;T one out there? So, but, but I think that I didn't, I don't see where the, at least the trade-offs that have been portrayed to us merit being kind of out, or together even, outweigh the, kind of the benefit that could be had of moving this further from most vulnerable populations. I feel like younger brains are more vulnerable. They are there consistently throughout the days, you know, and so I just, that's where I'm not, I'm not getting it, frankly. And so, that's what I'd like to, to get a better understanding of, what would happen if there's, we can move it? What are, what are the trade, really what are the other trade-offs in terms of the purposes of this cell tower?
All right. My own thoughts about this, while I appreciate the concerns of electromagnetic radiation, I don't pretend to be an expert in them. However, I do feel like the visual impacts associated with adding a tower are significant, in my subjective opinion. It's not that the, that the high school itself is a visual resource, but it is adjacent to visual resources. And the ability to reduce the number of things that project above the skyline, above the ridge line into the sky, or provide a backdrop when you're looking out at the ocean, to me, is valuable. So, I am, I understand that it would require additional finite element analysis. I'm, I'm an engineer. Stanford gave me some extra letters after my name, so I get the need for a little finite element analysis to carry the, the weight of this. This isn't my field, but I, I think it's not insurmountable to think that through. Based on what I'm hearing from my colleagues, I don't, I don't think we're quite ready to go forward. I don't think I'm hearing an objection in principle to having a tower, but we'd like to see some additional locations. Personally, my preference would be to add it to one of the towers, and if we have to make the tower bigger, I realize that a thicker tower might be more visible, and maybe someone wouldn't like that. Maybe they'd rather have four towers that are thin and one tower additional that's a little thicker. That's subjective, it's not my personal view. With respect to location, you know, one of those four towers is far enough away from a lot of the sensitive receptors that I think, you know, it could provide a meaningful alternative. And I do understand that that has costs associated with it, but I don't think that there are outrageous costs. You know, there is power in all of those locations. It's a matter of changing the location of the, the cabinetry and the, the equipment, wherever it's going to put in, there are fixed costs associated with it. So, I'm trying to see whether there's additional feedback that we can give the applicant. I'm not hearing anybody ready to make a motion to approve. So, what is it that you would like to guide the applicant if you feel like this is something that we should continue? And I do think that staff is not, is not encouraging us to reject the project, so continuance seems the alternative.
Can you be chair?
Yes, Commissioner Hernandez.
So, I support the commissioner's feedback, and ask the applicant to provide feedback to us over the commission. I, I understand it's a complicated issue, but I feel that the applicant can come up with something that makes sense, and may need a little more time to make that happen. And I'm supportive of the applicant taking through this process.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Reddick?
Well, I was thinking along the same lines that you were Vice Chair Benjamin a moment ago. It occurs to me that with the precedent of the, of the antenna being on one of the existing towers, rather than to promulgate more, more poles and more visual impact, keeping it on one of the towers has some appeal. And as you, as you were alluding to, my guess is the southwest one would come closest to meeting Commissioner Hernandez's good guidelines about, you know, maximize the difference, the distance between the classrooms and residences on Silver. So, I also am not an expert in this, but that's just an idea that the map suggests.
Commissioner Pogar?
And I, I guess I would ask from the applicant, a clearer explanation of what those trade-offs are in terms of how the, the cell tower would serve, you know, its purpose with moving the location? Because I'm gathering that there, I mean, there must be reasons to put it in certain locations in terms of providing cell service, as well as understanding, you know, what that means, you know, if there's, there's space for footings or whatever, all the, you know, really having those trade-offs laid off, because, laid out. Because I just, at this point, it was just kind of mentioned that they existed, but I didn't actually see any, and so, explanation of what they actually were. And so, for any kind of consideration of new location or changes to this, comparing that would be very helpful to understand, you know, so, because in making a decision, I want to understand the trade-offs, so.
I understand. And, you know, I also understand, based on Winter's comments, that, you know, we are, there's some preemption in terms of what things we can carry discretion on, and we're not, we're not trying to encroach into the FCC's tariff, we're gonna stay in our lane, but we have reasonable, I think, I've heard reasonable concerns with respect to considering alternate locations that I, I would like to see move forward, or clarity before we move forward on this. I certainly don't want to interrupt the ability to get the lighting project done. My intuition is specking a heavier pole that would accommodate a light, a cell tower might allow you the flexibility to think about that approach, but, you know, this is not my project, I defer to the applicant. But I'd like to see, I'd like to see the hard work that obviously went into this continue just a little bit more. It's important to acknowledge that there's been careful thought about this project, and it really shows. So, I want to thank you, and I want to thank our staff for trying to disentangle them as much as they can. And it may well be that there are other approaches to, that we haven't considered here that will make it more effective. You know, we're not wed to the idea that it has to be this particular solution, but we, I don't, I don't, I'm not seeing a, a commission that's ready to move forward. And I wonder if staff, if you have clarity of the concerns we've raised. So, I'm getting a nod from our staff, so I would entertain a motion to continue. If the applicant would like to speak a little bit, if there's no objection from, from staff or the commission, okay, we'll reopen the public hearing. Please speak up, Haley. Thank you.
The one thing that maybe I failed to mention is that we asked AT&amp;T to remove the cell tower in order for our project to move forward, because DSA is requiring that that pole be removed. And so, we asked them to place it on a temporary cell tower, which is called a cow on wheels, but there was no possibilities to do that. We looked at many, many different options. So, this is, to me, in my eyes, is temporary until our lease is up, and then we renegotiate where the, the tower needs to go. So, in order for me to get my project done, I need their tower off the pole. So, that's how, that's why this is all a little complicated. And so, this was a great temporary location, which could be permanent as well, which is not what we were looking at. We were just looking at a temporary location so I can get the light pole project done. So, I just wanted to mention that. And it could always be revisited once the lease is up, which is what we were planning on doing.
Okay, thank you for your comment. I'll close the public hearing again. Speaking, I shouldn't speak out of turn. We'll open it briefly, but, you know, please, if you have an additional comment, that would be fine, but let's make it brief, please.
I, I just want to reiterate that the current project, the project as proposed currently is compliant with the FCC rules, so.
Thank you. Okay, that's closed again.
Can you be chair?
Yes, Commissioner Hernandez.
I would just say that the applicant should have come to us with something that would have minimized the impact to classrooms and the residence on Silver. They understand the implications of radiation and the various objections that people raise. I just would say, they should have thought about this when they applied. They should have picked a position that didn't maximize their short-term revenue, but just maximize the implication to the community. And that is my frustration in this process, is the applicant did not think things through from a long-term perspective.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Yeah, actually, the, yeah, so, he's entitled to his opinion, and the public hearing is now closed. So, we're gonna hold off until a future point, unless the commissioners want to hear a response. I, I don't think a debate will facilitate the dialogue properly. So, yeah, this, excuse me, so you're out of order. So, the additional concern that was raised in the, in comments from school board staff was that in order for the lighting project to begin, the cell tower had to come down. Is that your understanding of the ties? And if so, do you have a feeling that we can bring back some temporary alternative in a timely way that would allow the already-approved project to go forward?
I do think that was a requirement for the lighting project. The state architect needs that, those, all those new facilities to be up to snuff for, for those standards, and they're, they're very high standards. The existing condition, I, I don't know that it, it would comply. So, that's, that's one of the concerns, is that there needs to be a place to relocate the installation, which is still in a lease with, with the school district, to, to move this lighting forward. So, that, that's definitely a challenge about this project. I do want to note, I understand our applicant is, is very concerned about some of the discussion going on about the electromagnetic standards, and they have been very clear, and you have a document, it's Attachment 4 on this item, that this conforms. And a reason for moving the tower needs to be more within the realm of what we've heard from Vice Chair Benjamin and some of our speakers tonight about visual impacts, which is definitely a topic of your use permit findings and, and code in the LCP. So, that said, those things may be compatible in terms of an alternate location, they may not be. We have not fully explored that with the applicant. So, just, just please understand that, and I, I hope that helped. I, okay.
Yeah.
So, we're real clear in the record here that this is, this, they did not propose anything that would be considered unsafe.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, speaking for myself, while I'm, as I say, electromagnetic radiation is not my expertise, I defer to the experts who have said they feel that this alternative is safe. My concerns for the location of the tower are associated with another set of issues. And while... of issues. And while my colleagues are free to have other opinions, I think it's important for you to understand that our motions are rooted in our laws, in our responsibilities, and not stepping out into the FCC's domain. Commissioner Pogar?
So two things. One is that with respect to the visual concerns, and again, I still don't understand how the discussion of trade-off, like the mention of trade-offs, applied to that as well. So I mean, there wasn't clear still, basically, how having the, moving it to a different location would affect the visual, it looks to me like there was no consideration of a different location. And so that's why I don't understand that trade-offs either. I will also say that with respect to the use of the trees as a way to mitigate the views, you know, from the north and the west, I think there was a comment, one of our public comments was about that. I think it's very relevant that if that's the way that the view shed is going to be, you know, the views are going to be protected, then that really has to be tied to the permit. I mean, I don't understand how that can be a way of mitigating and allowing this to be compliant with our law, you know, our codes, if it's not actually enforced, if there's no way to, mechanism for making sure that it actually is enforced by the applicant. So that's where I'm a little hazy on that as well. So I still see an issue with understanding trade-offs, whether, actually, about all of these issues. I found this kind of, there wasn't enough meat for me to understand what kind of decision I'm making, basically, in the report. So I think that stands in terms of my request from the applicant, regardless of the issues we're talking about.
So to summarize, I think that we're interested in alternative locations that provide us with a more pleasing visual response. We're interested, we understand that there's a tie-in between the lighting project and the cell tower project, because on the critical path of the lighting project is the removal of the cell tower, where it exists now. And so I'm concerned about a timely return of this project with information about alternatives. What would be disappointing would be to find out that we have no alternatives, and that we take it and like it. That would be, that would not be an appealing option to entertain. How much time do you think we would need in order to get this back in a reasonable timeframe?
I think I would like to confer with the applicant, see how long it will take them to turn around the information we need.
Do you need a few minutes right now?
I think so.
Let's take a five-minute recess. If we could return to order?
When I call in right now?
Yep.
Sorry, I feel like I'm all over the place. I guess I disconnected for a long time. He's in New Orleans, so I mean, I don't know. Yeah, right. Okay, I'm sorry.
All the visitors driving by.
Regular order, please. Can we return to order? Thank you. So we are resuming our consideration of the cell tower facility at the school board, and I believe staff has had a chance to confer with the applicant, and wanted to share their thoughts on that dialogue. So we'll return it to Jill.
Thank you, Vice Chair Benjamin. Commissioners, we are struggling to find a good way out of this, because we believe there's a lot of good near-term upside for the neighbors with regards to the lighting project. And the lighting needs to be installed over the summer. And if it's not this summer, then it's another summer. So what we discussed is really more about timelines. The good news, bad news here is you've got some upside potential with the lease expiring, with the AT&amp;T cell site that's currently on the site. My understanding is that it expires November 2021. So we're a year and a half out. It's hard to believe that, but it's right around the corner. Okay, there we go. So what they're proposing, what we wondered about, and they could agree to do, for your consideration, you could term the permit. You could consider putting an end date on it, which we would propose would expire January 1, 2022. But we wouldn't really want some additional hooks in it. For example, we would want an application at least six months in advance of that expiration, so January 1, 2021, an application for a new location for this installation. So you'd see this as a holding pattern for this cell installation, not the permanent final location. We would also expect that all the other conditions that you've talked about and heard about tonight regarding tree plantings and re-establishing screening areas or making new screening areas would be implemented early during this temporary period, which would give you more things to look at and consider, and as well as this applicant in terms of finding a location that was more suited to the visual resource concerns and the aesthetic concerns that you have about the site. This, we're more concerned about coming up with a new location very quickly, not because of the technical details on it. We are confident the applicant could, you know, run the numbers and do the modeling and all of that, but more because there are a number of site constraints and the time constraint. And so we're trying to get the benefit to the neighborhood and the kids with the field lights, and this is really the only reason why we're suggesting this. But if you were to consider it, we would need to have a very strict end date if you are not satisfied with this as the final location for this facility. If you have questions about that for the applicant, I'm sure they would be happy to answer them. But of course, this is a location that has already been assessed from the technical side of things. So you have that information.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, reaction?
Under this scenario, when would the new cell antenna go up and be operational between the football field and the baseball field?
Their goal is to, for both projects, is to get the work done in the summer when school's out of session, so in the next few months.
Commissioner Pogar, questions? Want to think it over? Commissioner Hernandez, any comments? Questions?
When would this project come back to us, from the commission?
If I understood our staff, she was proposing that the tower would expire, the lease, sorry, the permit would expire on January 1 of 2022, and by June, sorry, July 1, 2022, June 1, 2022, I'm sorry. Sorry, yeah, June 1, 2021, we would have a application for a coastal development permit for the relocated facility. Did I get that right, staff?
We had July for six months ahead of the expiration. It could just as easily be another month. When we receive an application, there's a period of time where staff is doing some work on them. So that doesn't mean you would see it straight away. You'd probably see it that fall.
Does that answer the question, Commissioner?
Yes.
Any thoughts?
In the interim, can we just think about moving the tower sooner? But I'm okay with what we've heard tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Pogar?
I had a clarifying question. So I didn't quite understand the part about the screening trees, the areas that would be screening with trees. Was it that we would include a condition that would be to implement, get those planted and in place immediately with the current permit? Or is that that wouldn't, that's something that wouldn't happen until the next, till the next application that would arrive in July 1?
Speaking, I'm going to guess their answer, because the locations of the lights are well-defined. The screening tree requirements would be well-defined, since they're for the, the screens are for the lights, not for the, well, that's true, they're both, they're both, aren't they?
Yeah, I thought that they were.
Let me not put words in your mouth. What do you think, Jill?
We think it would be beneficial to require the trees be planted now, because it would help screen this temporary location. Any trees that go in to screen that location would all, you know, the field lights are in a similar, they're near each other. in a similar, they're near each other, so the screening would affect both. And the open areas that the community showed you tonight on the maps, I think there was, the relationship from Pacific Ridge, for example, was highlighted tonight, and staff and other speakers talked about some different gaps in the treescape, and the ability to fill that in now, we would see no reason to put that off. We believe that screening in the areas that are sort of on the perimeter of this campus would only help any future location of an installation. In that, right now, tonight, we're really not sure where that option will end up.
Need to extend the meeting.
Oh.
Could I have a motion to extend the meeting, please?
So moved.
Till when?
Till 11:00, is that?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so additional thoughts? Or a motion, either one?
Okay. Do you want to, Steve, or you?
Well, let me buy a little time and weigh in a little bit, because I appreciate, you know, it was lost on me that these projects were so tightly linked when I reviewed the report, and that, it was probably there, and I just did not grasp it, so that's probably on me. Having said that, I do think that there's a need for a better location. I understand the benefits of this location in terms of cost. I see some of the benefits that appeal, but I also think that there are good alternatives. And perhaps, a temporary permit would be a middle ground that would allow the community to get the lighting benefits that they, I think, really want, and gives the applicant a chance to work through the alternatives without running into a brick wall. So, I'm open to this. It's not my first choice. My first choice would be to have had alternative locations, but that's water under the bridge. We can't change that, and I'm, it's no point in being upset about it. But those are my, you know, I do agree that the planting the trees now and making sure that they're maintained, not just established, but maintained, is a critical feature of any project, and I don't see how, I think that that dominates any of the alternatives. It's consistent with any of the alternative locations. So, I'm supportive of that. I think six months is more than enough time to consider the application. If it comes to us, you know, in the fall, that's acceptable to me. But I am serious about a different location for this tower. I don't like the location. And the only reason I'm accommodating this is because I respect the entanglements of these two projects, and I want to be sure that the public gets the benefit, because there is not a half-a loaf alternative, it's either all or none, at least temporarily. Any additional thoughts, Rick?
No.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I just, I wonder how the neighbors would vote if it was a choice between solving the light problems and being stuck with the cell antenna there for two and a half years. And I wonder how the students and faculty and fans would vote if they were given a choice of whether the speeding up the football field lights is worth living under a cell tower for two and a half years. I honestly wonder those things. I know how I would vote if I were a student there. So, I won't, I won't make a motion in favor of that.
I am also not thrilled with this. I do see, though, the value of having the middle ground in terms of having some way of moving forward with the project for the lights. I do think there's a big benefit to the community, the neighbors around there, and so I feel strongly about that. But I think that part of what sent me back with this, reviewing this, is that it wasn't clearly laid out what the, what the actual function even of, I mean, it doesn't even say, I didn't even know where, what the service area would be, what was the basis for this decision? And so, as someone who's supposed to be making a decision, I had a very technical report that was essentially saying it's compliant with the, you know, standards for EMF or radio frequency emissions and, you know, all of that, and that's fine, but even just the basics of whether the, of why it's there in terms of the function it serves was not even presented. And so, I just, I found it very difficult. So, I would say that moving forward and understanding the pros and cons of different locations, and even if it comes back and it's like, no, it has to be here, I want to understand why and have a clear, clearly laid out, again, the, what are the trade-offs? What are we deciding about? And so, I just, that's one of the hardest things for me, and I did not understand, I'll be honest, until far into the discussion, how linked it was to the lights. So, there was just some struggles that I would like to see avoided in terms of future, a future application. I would support, though, moving forward with this as a temporary option, so, and with all of the kind of conditions that we've discussed, so.
So, would you care to make that into a motion?
Could I say one thing before we do that?
Of course.
I see the virtue in this compromise thing. It's obviously not crazy. It's a painful thing for me. I feel like, I feel like we're rewarding the way this planning process has gone forward between the school district and AT&amp;T when we shouldn't be rewarding it, and I personally really don't like the idea of the environment that will be created, even if it's for relatively short, two and a half years of that cellphone being there. But at the same time, what you all say about the benefits to the neighbors and the football players of the lights being improved is, makes lots of sense.
Of course.
And one other thing, actually, that occurred to me is that, my understanding, and maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, is that in, if this isn't, doesn't go forward, and the school district is not able to replace the lights, the tower's just going to remain where it is, right?
No.
For the time being.
Oh, for the time being.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's another thing to consider, is that we're not necessarily making, this interim period is till November 2021, is my understanding, so, and it could tell, well, take that long to, I mean, I deal with a lot of permitting and bureaucratic processes, it could very well, you know, I understand that, I definitely am compassionate about that problem, but I'm, so partly, I'm thinking that we're not necessarily making a big, the decision we're making isn't necessarily that much different than what's going to, the status quo, frankly.
Right. I apologize for misunderstanding your point. So, what she's saying is that the alternative to approving is the status quo, which is the concern you have, so there's not an obvious, at least until November of 2021, we'd be in a similar position. So, the regrettable, the regrets you experience are the status quo regrets as well.
The status quo being the antenna on the current.
The tower that's there right now. If the lights didn't go, if the lights stayed where they are and no new tower went in, we'd have whatever concerns you have about the lights and the cell tower in its present location would be that for all of, but the last two months of the period of this temporary permit.
Yeah, I know, I know, that's a good point. The antenna has existed up there for many years, and I don't have a quarrel with the safety findings that have been part of this. I have a quarrel with the visual impact, and I guess the, what I would call the micro-visual impact of walking around underneath the standalone antenna for some number of years.
I understand how you feel. Commissioner Pogar.
All right, I'm going to move that we approve the resolution, PDP 19-021, with the condition to, that it expires January 1, 2022, and that staff receive an application for the, for a replacement new location tower by July 1, was it July 1, 2021? And that we include the provisions, or the condition for the screening trees that are implemented and established as self-sustaining and maintained. And that we also include this condition C-10 about lighting, that they, basically, that the change to that about not having, basically to remove the text that's already noted as removed. Is there anything else?
Is there a second to the motion?
Or, but did I capture, did I capture all of the?
One concern I heard earlier, I don't know if it was your motion, that the relocation considered the concerns raised by the planning commission.
So, they'll add that, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this item? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pogar?
Aye.
Commissioner Riddick?
No.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Benjamin?
Yes. Thank you. The motion carries.
Motion passes.
Three to one. Thank you very much. That was a very thoughtful deliberation and principled votes all around, so I really appreciate the dialogue. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, I think that completes our public hearing items, so we are on to the director's report. Take it away, Jill.
Thank you, Commission. This will be brief. This is our last meeting for a while with Winter. Winter is going to be doing some other things for a few months, and Sarah Clark, who has served here before, most recently with the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and also to fill in from time to time, will be here over the summer. When are you back? Yes, do.
Yes, thank you for your patience and understanding. I know I just joined you, and I've really enjoyed my time, and I will be back in September. I have a three-month sabbatical that is my reward for being at the firm for more than 10 years. We have a sabbatical program, so Sarah Clark is wonderful. I don't know if she's already been here with you, but you will love her, and I'll see you in the fall.
We'll want to hear your sabbatical presentation.
Yeah, I'll have a PowerPoint with my photos.
That's agenda is that.
Yeah, we'll try not to hate you for having a three-month sabbatical.
So, moving on from that, we'll get a little more mundane. The schedule over the summer, just a note, we intend to take August 13th off. That is your first of your two August meetings. August 27th still works, but there's enough of us who will not be available, including the city attorney, that we're going to, we're going to take that one off. So, just heads up. We have your schedule for, it looks like Bridgette was able to collect it through the end of August, and so we can see that, it looks like we have quorum for all the other dates coming through, but if anything comes up, please let us know. There's a number of dates where one of you will be away, and then we just, we just want to make sure. Agenda forecast, June 11th, noted last time, we're noticed for a project at the McDonald's with a facade upgrade and a sign program. The duplex at 555 Poplar will be coming back to you, that had been a study session item previously. June 25th, I am sorry, I can't forecast it very well, we're trying to see what's ready, and there's a, we have a huge number of projects that we're all working on, and there's a number of them that are not quite ready to go. We wanted to bring, also bring the local coastal program. We have a number of products that we've been working on, staff-wise, and we're starting to vet them with the subcommittee. There's a lot of technical work going on in the background, and it's just not quite ready yet, and we don't want to put it out until it's done. So, we'll keep you posted. We're not resting on our laurels, and we know that you're eager for it. We're very eager to bring it back to you. Couple things about city council, on May 21st, they approved the Phase 4 of the Carnoustie subdivision. Upcoming on June 4th, they will be considering the ordinance that will enable the establishment of an architectural advisory committee. June 18th is budget, and on July 16th, we've brought in an affordable housing consultant, and he's been working with the community development department, Bill Lowell. Bill and I will be presenting some affordable housing topics to city council on July 16th, and we'll give you some more information about that as we prepare that presentation. Last week, I approved two items at the director hearing, so they're still within their appeal period. There was a remodel, a new accessory dwelling unit at Filbert, and Shakespeare in the Park was re-upped for five years at Carter Park, although we put a term on it, five years, or when the park gets modified, whichever happens sooner, because we have an active park plan going on for Carter, and that will change the functionality and maybe allow for the Shakespeare folks to have a little bit of a different operation, so we'll work on that. May 29th, we're scheduled to have 537 Roosevelt, it's a new single-family home on a vacant lot. June 26th, 444 Correa Street, also a new home. And that covers it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anything the commissioners want to report? Nothing from you tonight, Rick? Good night, Rick. All right, in that case, I think we've reached the end of our, oh, he's there, he's there.
Nothing from you.
Very good. In that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I agree adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
10:50. Man, that was kind of a rough one to start in on. No, no, that's okay. Sorry? Yes, yes, he gets to be tired.